Okay, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call to order the October 25th, 2021 City Council Successor Agency to the redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Will you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right, are there any changes to the order of the agenda this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, Greg, are there any reports from closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have a report from the closed session that happened at the special meeting. At the special meeting, the council considered settlement of the existing litigation entitled City of San Carlos Housing Authority versus Louis Bella and Lilian Bella, San Mateo County Superior Court Case Number 19-CIV-06145. I'm pleased to announce that the City Council accepted the settlement of the matter for the sum of $3,075,000, which is the amount of fair compensation payable in the eminent domain action referenced earlier. So that's the final action that's required, and that's why I'm obligated to report out a closed session.
Okay, thank you. Crystal, are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
I don't see any hands up, but let me give it a few seconds. So if you've joined this meeting and you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen. And there are no hands showing, so we don't have any.
Okay, thank you. All right, Greg, are there any other procedural items we need to take care of on this before we move to the next agenda item?
We'll be processing the paperwork and moving it forward, so no further action tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item five, Council Communications and Announcements, which are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and now action will be taken on these items at the meeting. Do any members of council have anything to report out this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. For public comments, persons wishing to address the City Council on items not on the listed agenda may do so at this time. If each speaker is limited to two minutes, if the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to the staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, are there any members of public who wish to make a public comment on an item that's not on the agenda this evening?
Yes, we have two hands at the moment. First up is Dimitri. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Hi, yeah, so just a quick comment. We just found out about Honda dealership at 495 Brigato Road that the Planning Commission okayed, and we have some concerns about it because part of the environmental remediation is just paving over an area. I believe it's, you know, the parking lot, and they weren't going to plant trees in the ground and the soil to avoid environmental remediation. So we were kind of requesting that the council take a look at that project just to make sure that the proper environmental remediation takes place, as we've talked about for quite a while. We want to right the wrongs of the past, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Thank you. Next up is Kayleen Salander. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak. Honorable members of the City Council, my name is Kaylin Salander, and I am here today as a member of the 2021 Supervisory District Lines Advisory Commission. This all-volunteer commission is right now performing a mission fundamental to our democracy, helping to ensure all residents of San Mateo County have equal representation. We do that by using 2020 census data. New population figures are being used to draw lines so San Mateo County's five supervisory districts have close to the same number of people. But this is more than a numbers game. Districts should also fairly represent communities with shared needs and interests, and on behalf of the commission, I would invite you and everyone watching or listening to this meeting to get involved in this important process. As a first step, I encourage everyone to go to smcdistrictlines.org. So again, it's smcdistrictlines.org where you will find a wealth of information and ways to participate. We want to hear from you about what you consider your community to be. You can fill out a survey that's available in English, Chinese, Spanish, or Tagalog, share your opinions, and comment on Facebook and Twitter using the hashtag #smcdistrictlines, and you can participate in a public meeting. You can find the full schedule at smcdistrictlines.org. Our final, or likely what is going to be our final meeting, is this Thursday at 6:30 PM. So as US council members know, our elected representatives make decisions that have real impact on our communities. The Board of Supervisors oversees an annual budget of $3.8 billion. Where district lines are drawn, impact who can run for office and which voters can vote for candidates from a district. Once approved, district boundaries will be in place for the next 10 years, so the time to get involved is now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Evan Trigger.
Yes, hello, hi. Hi, my name is Evan Trigger. You guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear.
Excellent, thank you. So I'm speaking for a group of my neighbors who, we all are owners of dogs, and we're up in the Highland area, and we've been having a lot of challenges with finding areas that are able to bring the dogs to off-leash, understand there's a downtown dog park, as well as the Heather area. And, you know, from using those areas over the past year, having seen, you know, kind of what is there, there's a lot of challenges with both. Downtown dog park is only open during certain hours, it's closed on Sundays, and it's closed in the middle of the morning. The Heather, you know, dog roach area is not fenced in, it has a, I would say, pretty steep cliffs, and just the landscaping is not very satisfactory. And there's no lights there, and there's also poor lighting in downtown dog parks. So, you know, while there are certainly areas designated, they definitely are lacking. And then in terms of other areas, it's been challenging to find, you know, ways to have dogs play and socialize if you don't have a backyard or access to a large area. And it's really important for them. I'm actually a child and adult psychiatrist, and over the past year, I've been writing increasing number of notes for patients who need therapy dogs. Now, they all love the area, it's not just about San Carlos, but it's clear that, you know, when people are taking dogs as pets, they're also taking them in as therapy dog service animals, and they need places where they can go and exercise and socialize and, you know, live an enjoyable life as well. So I just want to put it out there that I think the Graves City Council could work on pens, either update the current facilities, or maybe add hours back to certain parks. You know, I think people, in the end, they want to compromise and hopefully some hours for dogs, some hours without dogs, maybe that's a way to make people, you know, kind of meet in the middle. Anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you, Evan. Next up is Nicole Bachelor.
Hi, this is Nicole. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time. I'm really here just to give my own comments based on what Evan said. Basically, to agree, we've seen an increase in dog ownership all over because of COVID, and a lot of young dogs that need exercise, and they need a place to run around and play. I walk my dogs for an hour every morning, but they come home full of energy. If I take them to a place where they can run around with other dogs, they get so much more exercise. As Evan said, the existing dog parks, the one in Burton Park, is very small, very crowded, which leads some dogs to become aggressive. So we know there's, I have friends who won't take their dogs there at all. The one at Heather, as Evan said, has other challenges. He mentioned the landscaping, the dogs with curly hair pick up all kinds of burrs and fox tails, which is really problematic and dangerous for them in some cases. So we would, we just asked the City Council that we can have an opportunity to revisit. I know there was a pilot previously, and there were some problems discovered because of the pilot, or, you know. We had looked at opening up stadium for some fixed hours, like Barrett Park in Belmont that has fixed hours, like one hour a day or two hours a day for off-leash only. So we would like to explore, we have some ideas how we can alleviate some of the problems that were discovered during the pilot that was done years back, or just discover other options that would allow us to have more off-leash space for dogs. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up is Zinavoy Bishenholz. You should be able to unmute.
Yeah. Hi, thank you for taking my call. I just want to, basically, piggyback on the previous callers. Just, I hope the council realizes that during COVID, the dog ownership increased dramatically. Okay, people picked up, the dog shelters are basically empty. So, and dogs do need exercise. It's very important. So one idea is that if you would consider the great job that was done on the Lower Highlands Park, okay, when it's fenced off, the only thing that we need to do is to fence off the upper Highlands Park. That will solve many problems, make it much safer, discourages the deer to damage the grass, okay, and make it safe for the joggers to run around the perimeter, okay? Again, just limited hours within the enclosed space would help us, okay? So, and that way, this park will become enjoyable for everybody, from small children to elder children and adults and dogs, okay, for every resident of San Carlos. Hopefully, you will take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do not see any further hands from the public.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rack, I see your hands up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on the comment that Dimitri made, because my understanding, I saw that there was a conditional use permit, and we did make some changes. Is that project in the East Side Innovation Plan? Because I thought, area, because I thought we weren't allowing any exceptions to that plan until we approved this. So I just want to understand how that is the case, if it is within the area of the East Side Vision Plan. Is that something someone from staff can respond to? Is that appropriate, Greg, at this point?
We can answer briefly questions. That sounds like it might be more complicated than a couple of sentences to answer, but I think Al, if Al's on the call, he might be able to respond to why it was processed. But the Vision Plan didn't act as a moratorium to stop all development, but it did. Some of the larger projects that came in that are requesting different development standards, those were impacted by the Vision Plan that you're going to be looking at tonight. But projects that conform with the zoning and meet the general plan requirements, I think those were moving forward as part of the ordinary development.
So just so I'm clear, Greg, so things that would require exceptions should not have been processed like the MBC project along the creek bed then, because it required an exception, according to that?
Well, I think that, that one, I'm not sure the timing on that one.
We did, they did it in the last two months.
I mean, when they, when they applied for that.
Maybe I could clarify. What the council directive was that anything that required a zone change or a designation to a planned development permit be put on hold for the completion of the vision study? It was not that any exception request that's granted under the municipal code be placed on hold. Specifically, in response to your question about the Honda dealership relocation, that is outside of the East Side Vision Study area, and the aspect that required the conditional use permit was for the sales, the repair aspect is considered permitted. We do have a letter from the Environmental Protection Agency that approved the site remediation that does include some offhauling of some of the soil, as well as a capping of the portion of the site. We'd be happy to provide that to the council, as well as Mr. Dimitri. Thank you.
So that answers my question, Lisa, thank you so much, because I didn't, I wasn't sure where it fit within the, within the East Side Innovation District, so that's helpful, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Rack, and Lisa, I would accept your offer to follow up with Dimitri and the GES on their questions and concerns, or another member of staff. Thank you. Crystal, are there any?
Madam Mayor, we'll do that.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Crystal, are there any additional members of the public who wish to make a comment on items not on the agenda this evening?
I do not see any hands.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move to item number seven, the consent calendar. Are there any members of council or staff who need to pull an item off of this consent calendar this evening? All right, any questions or public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, all right, at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through K.
There's actually another one, there's, it goes through.
Oh, Item L.
L.
And Item L, adopting ordinance number 1573 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, repealing San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 8.27, prohibition on the use of polystyrene-based disposable food service ware by food vendors, and adopting a new Chapter 8.27, disposable food service ware, regulating the use of disposable food service ware by food facilities.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Permalohan.
Yes. All right, that moves us to new business item 8A, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. And we'll be taking a presentation tonight from Alseve, Community Development Director, and Lisa Porus, Advanced Planning Manager, and I see that there's other members of the team available tonight as well. Welcome, Al.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Lisa Porus, our principal planner, will be delivering the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Al. And thank you, Crystal, for the slides, and I think I'm able to advance them myself. I'm going to try and do that this evening. I think I can do that, great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you, as noted on the slide here, is the proposed East Side Innovation District Vision Plan, and a recommendation by the San Carlos Planning Commission that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the Vision Plan. So the full and complete Vision Plan document is included in the staff report as attachment number three, and it consists of 79 pages and includes six appendices. Tonight's presentation is going to focus on an overview of the Vision Plan.
Lisa, can I interrupt you for just a moment? I realize I probably should have done a call for, Greg, do I need to do a call for disclosures at this point or after the presentation?
It could be at either time, just before you're considering the item, you should.
All right, well, we'll take it after your presentation. Thank you, Lisa.
Sure, no problem. So tonight's presentation is going to focus on, just an update on the Vision Plan process. I mean, this is something that we've heard about over the last couple of study sessions that we have had, but we do want to touch upon that. And then we want to really focus tonight's presentation on changes that were made to the 10 big moves or planning strategies since the council last saw them on September 8th during your study session. The council will recall that at the September 8th study session, council informed staff that it would not be able to address the Vision Plan completely without first receiving a status report on the housing element update. At the Housing Element Study Session of September 27th, the council did receive staff's presentation for showing proposed solutions to meet San Carlos regional housing needs by increasing densities along the main corridors in San Carlos, such as El Comunial Real, which are basically areas where existing mixed-use residential is allowed, and also in the multifamily zoning districts as well. So following that Housing Element Study Session with the council, staff went ahead and scheduled a formal meeting with the Planning Commission to consider their recommendation on the Vision Plan. And at the October 4th meeting, the Planning Commission did move to adopt a resolution recommending that the council adopt a resolution to approve the Vision Plan this evening. We will be hearing from the council and the public. and the public and answering questions and responding to any discussion items that the council wishes to focus upon this evening. And then there is a motion on the table for the council's consideration. So the process to develop the vision plan started approximately ten months ago. It included eight meetings with stakeholders, which included business and property owners in the in the vision plan boundary area, the developers proposing projects in the area and members of the leadership group of the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood. It included two community workshops with over two hundred and fifty combined attendees, two online feedback sessions with over one hundred and twenty unique responses, a study session with the Planning Commission on July fourteenth, and then a joint study session with the Planning Commission and Transportation and Circulation Commission on August twenty fifth, followed by another study session with the city council on September eighth. So this is what we see as an extraordinary process to involve the community, to hear as many perspectives as we can so that we can develop a shared vision for this area of our city. So the inception of this plan really started out as a city council strategic objective, which all of you are very, very familiar with. And the vision plan project was designed initially to be done quite quickly in nine months for ten months in. So that's not too bad for a process like this from start to finish. And the vision plan's primary objectives are and still remain to pre to serve as a guiding document for new development, but also for any capital improvements within the boundary areas as well. The intent was to develop a holistic plan that would encompass urban design, mobility, open space, and the environment. It was also intended to establish a community benefits framework that council could use during negotiations for applicants seeking plan development plan permits. And as was noted just in the comments just before this item came up, all of the plan development applications were set on hold until this vision plan could be approved. So what we want to talk about now, and this is because of several emails and questions that we've been getting more recently from the from the community about what the vision plan is and what the vision plan is not. Particularly whether, you know, the vision plan has any new floor area ratios or or adjusted height in any manner. So we thought this would be a very good opportunity to kind of clarify some of those questions. So what the vision plan will do and what the vision plan will not do, I just want to take a moment here and and talk about this. So what the vision plan will do, it is a document that will direct and shape development in a manner that aligns with the vision plan and its ten planning strategies or ten big moves. It will also establish a community benefits framework that decision makers can use during negotiations. It will also or it also identifies many follow up action items that the city can take, such as establishing a transportation management agency, further analysis of Pulgas Creek and study the potential for housing. And what the vision plan will not do is it doesn't change any allowed uses on any of the parcels or properties within its boundaries that would require a general plan land use amendment. It also does not change any rules that are outlined in the zoning ordinance, such as height, square footage, parking requirements. Any change to those regulations would need to be done through an amendment through the zoning ordinance. And this is really important because I'm just going to bring up housing because we're going to get into this a little bit later, I know. Because this is one of the changes that was made since the council last saw the vision plan. But as an example, in this context, housing is not a permitted land use on any of the parcels or properties within the vision plan study area. And to allow for any new land use, such as housing, it would require an amendment to the general plan and the zoning ordinance, both of which would need to be reviewed by the Planning Commission with final action by the city council. And so it's important to note that this is a legal requirement and a process to change the general plan and zoning ordinance. Anytime one would want to add a new use, especially not especially, but where you where such a use is currently not allowed. So as an example, the city council could not direct a plan development plan to include housing until, well, I would say that you could not do that because the housing housing as a land use is not currently allowed under current general plan and zoning regulations. So I just wanted to clarify that. And so as we're talking about housing, one of the changes that was made to the vision plan document since the council last saw it was was to look at the study of two different areas in the vision plan for the potential of housing. And what that includes, and we can touch upon the language a little bit later, but just as as a whole in the context of housing and how this vision plan does address or doesn't address it. What happened was is that when we had the joint study session with the planning mission and transportation and circulation and commission, language was added that this that we should look at studying the potential for housing along Terminal Way and Tankledge Road and Old County Road as well. And that was recently modified by the planning commission for a recommendation that we also look at higher density housing that is within one half mile of the Caltray Station, but only along arterials and collectors and in the vision plan study area, there are arterial and collector would be Old County Road and industrial and only in the plan area and not in the adjacent neighborhood. So we did receive some comments from the Greater East San Carlos Leadership Group about what that modification from the planning commission would mean. So we did want to clarify that right at the outset. So the vision plan does have two action items that addresses the potential that basically gives a direction for future study for housing in these two areas. But again, it doesn't change the general plan. It doesn't change the zoning ordinance. It's just an action item for further study. And it would be up to the council to determine, you know, how soon it may want to do that study or or at what what point in time it might want to do that. So how is housing and jobs, how is housing and the jobs balance being addressed in San Carlos now? So we did want to touch on that as that is another question that we are receiving question queries on. So as the council knows, and for anyone who is watching, the housing element update is currently underway now. And this addresses the period between twenty twenty three and twenty thirty one. Our regional housing needs allocation, our housing unit obligation is two thousand seven hundred and thirty five new housing units to the year twenty thirty one. A common practice and best practices that many of the cities across the state are doing are adding in buffer units. And without getting into a more complicated discussion on how sites are selected for the housing element, I just wanted to summarize that it is a good practice to add in additional buffer units, what we call as buffer units or buffer sites, since not all of the sites, one hundred percent of them, will be utilized to meet the housing needs. So in that practice, the two thousand seven hundred and thirty five figure would bump up to three thousand two hundred and sixteen units. We do want to also point out that the methodology that was adopted by the Association of Bay Area Governments and approved by the state did assume job growth in its calculations. Any evaluation of higher densities and height in multifamily and the C zoning districts would be done in the context of the housing element update. We are looking, as I mentioned before, in areas that are already allowed for residential use and looking at increasing those densities. And of course, the council, remember, we talked about that during the September twenty seventh study session on housing. And currently, we are looking at jobs housing balance metrics and through the housing element update. So as we can look into the vision plan, and I know the council is aware of the development going forward, a lot of the development that is going forward is what is development that was contemplated in the two thousand nine general plan, which goes to the year twenty thirty. I think it it's just happening all at once, or it feels like it's happening all at once. So it's getting quite some attention. So I'm sorry, I'm not sure why this is coming on so slowly, but the the intention of the vision plan as we get into it is really set into place by the following vision statement. And the vision statement really serves as what this area could become if all of the ten big moves were made and established and development responded accordingly. So the vision plan statement reads the future East Side Innovation District will be a well-connected, multimodal neighborhood with a mix of uses that integrates existing businesses with new science and technology uses and offers a rich array of community amenities for a more resilient and inclusive future. So some of the things that we have heard since we first presented the ten big moves to the community and at the study sessions. Number one, which we just mentioned before, is that housing should be addressed in the east side. That more emphasis was needed on environmental remediation, including stronger language for such. That there needs to be more clarity on how the vision plan can be part of citywide traffic solutions. That there needs to be more emphasis on strategies that reduce impacts to the adjacent neighborhood to the north. More clarity on the desired look and feel of new development along the street, making sure that there was no canyon-like effects as a result of new development. That there be more guidance on desired bio bio safety levels for future life science uses. More clarity on the vision plan role in addressing sea level rise and flooding. That a portion of the discovery path along Branston Road be improved to have improved access from Old County Road. And then staff is aware of a wording change that didn't quite make it into the version that's before you tonight. But this is something that we can easily change and wanted to make note of that where we reference daycare, there would be a wording, a wording change to childcare consistent with the city council's direction. So these are the bulk of what we've heard from the community, the planning commission, the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and the public as we first introduced these ten big moves. And so the focus of tonight's presentation will not be to go over all of the ten big moves in depth. But we do want to focus on the changes that have been made. And we do have in our slide deck all of the ten moves. Should the council have any questions or want to focus on any one of those in particular? So now I'd like to just move ahead on the changes. So the first change that was made was that we added setbacks to Industrial Road. And this was for two reasons, to ensure a consistent urban design feel and a pedestrian oriented experience along Industrial Road. So this came in as new principle C, which reads establish a generous and consistent sidewalk along the entire eastern side of Industrial Road. And it has two action items that follow. So this is located on page twenty seven of the vision plan. The second area that was addressed was a relocation of a portion of the discovery path to 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 push it out towards Branston Road. So this is a portion of it. And this previously ran between parcels along the formal rail spur segment. By doing so, it increases the visibility of the path at Branston Road. And as you can see here on the diagram, this red dotted line represents sort of kind of like terminus of the existing railroad spur. So what we did is instead of having that remain and potentially cut off a portion of any proposed development in this area, we really have had it changed it so it would just turn the corner and align with Branston Road. The next area of change had to do with promoting environmental stewardship. The council may recall that big move number three originally focused on Pulgas Creek, but it has been expanded quite a bit based upon community feedback and decision maker direction. So it now is presented before the council as with increased emphasis on environmental stewardship. It does, we feel, have stronger remediation language as well as addressing flood mitigation requirements. And these are outlined in principles A one where it addresses remediation efforts throughout the district. So this language here is new and expanded and strengthened based upon some city council direction that we received at the study session. And then we wanted, due to sea level rise and flooding, and these are, you know, obviously serious concerns that are coming from the community, we did want to put in place in the vision plan language that is really consistent with what's in the newly adopted climate mitigation and adaptation plan. And we recognize that this issue is much bigger than this vision plan alone. It requires much coordination. And and so what we're really referencing here is, you know, consistent with what's in the climate mitigation and adaptation plan. The next area of change has to do with big new big move number five, which is to support distinct district subareas. And so this is this area of the vision plan is segmented into two different parts, or actually three different parts, but two parts mainly, which is principles related to the catalyst subarea. So the catalyst subarea is sort of, you know, sort of this big rectangular area here, and it extends out all the way past Holly Holly Street. And then the industrial core area is everything off of Branston out towards Terminal Way and bounded by Industrial Road to the east and Old County Road to the west. And so what changed here is that in the catalyst subarea under principle A four, we included language based upon the planning commission's recommendation of October fourth to study the potential for introducing mixed use residential development and other high density residential that is contextual to the neighborhood along arterial and collective streets in the areas within a half mile from the San Carlos Caltray Station. And we did want to clarify based upon some community feedback concerning this new language that any study would really be limited to the area within the vision plan. We wouldn't, we wouldn't, you know, be doing the area outside of the vision of the vision plan. And I have a diagram on the next slide where I can clarify that a little bit more. And then in the industrial core subarea, this new language here really serves at two different, you know, objectives. One is to create a buffer from industrial uses from the existing single family neighborhood to the north by adding, by looking at adding, you know, some housing in this area. So there is a directive in this vision plan. Again, the directive reads to study the potential for it. Again, this would be a separate action item outside of the context of this vision plan. There's many implementation items, but these are just two of them. So in this next slide, we just kind of wanted to give the council a little bit of a clearer picture about what was really intended within that recommended language coming from the planning commission and what it would mean and how it applies to the vision plan itself. So the vision plan boundaries are clearly laid out here. And so when we look at one half mile from the San Carlos Multimodal Transit Center, which is identified right here on the screen with this logo, the half mile radius is shown to really encompass the catalyst area out from Holly, just past Holly Road along Industrial and then out towards and then kind of really, I guess, bisects the the study area by moving down across Industrial Road a little bit along Commercial Street and out towards Old County Road. And staff can certainly if the council directs, add language to this action item that clarifies that this this study only be conducted within the existing vision plan boundaries. That's something that we can do. And so the next area in big move number five was to add additional guidance on the design character of future buildings and open spaces in this. And this really had to do with the addressing the canyon effect comment that we heard from the council at your study session on September the eighth. So we added in a new. So we added in a new principle, principle C, which reads that new buildings should enhance the character of the street. And embody a superior, superior quality of architecture for an urban design. So there's a couple of action items down here where it really references how streets um come to the edge of the sidewalk. And where setbacks uh would be allowed. And then new principle D, which really addresses open space. And um the landscaping of them, their, you know, of of those areas, including the discovery path and other non-behavioral areas. Um to ensure that they have durable materials and low impact, a low-impact planting palette provides uh shade. And human comfort to those traveling along along those areas. The next change um that was made um was in um um big move number eight. Which refers to investing in multimodal streets. Under principle D, which reads prioritize reduction of freight and country traffic in residential neighborhoods to the north. Um we did add some guidance for developing um what we call a slow streets toolkit. To manage traffic impacts on this adjacent residential neighbor neighborhood. And we did include um language that um refers to, you know, um implementation items and solutions. That would consist anywhere from pilot programs to more formal solutions. And this was something that the um greater East San Carlos neighborhood really wanted us to see and. And and to ensure that the pilot program component was um was acknowledged. The next section, uh big move number nine, to reduce congestion through coordinated transportation strategies. Um the changes here um for are are minor but helpful. Um we did add some um additional explanation of what a transportation demand management is. Um what that can do, and that's provided under here in uh principle number number B, which refers to the TDM requirements. Um acknowledging what the city currently has um adopted now. In section eighteen twenty-five of the zoning ordinance, um those TDM requirements, as well as um new um. Uh some language that refers to um addressing the potential uh to change that in the future. Um should uh new information or better technology um um, you know, move towards that. And so we have that language referenced here as well. And then we did add um some case studies. Um regarding transportation management, eh uh transportation management agencies in the Bay Area. This has been added to the vision plan as appendancy um number six. And um under principle C, where it's talking about the TMA, we do have a little new call-up box. Where it references um the TMA's um in another section. So this concludes um staff's presentation on the changes that were made um to the ten big moves that were presented to the council prior. Um to this uh meeting this evening. This would be um the motion the city council could choose to make. And I did want to add um for the council that this is um the team that is available this evening to answer any questions you may have. Um Al Sebey, our Community and Economic Development Director, will be uh moderating the questions. So any questions that the council have, Al will take them or direct them to the appropriate staff or consultant team member um to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate it. Um, all right. So before we move to questions, I'll um start with disclosures. Um so for me, a PPC advice letter number A twenty-one-one-one allows me to participate in tonight's discussion. My consultancy practice has never done any business with with the city or with the businesses that have applications before the city. Um prior to last discussion, I toured the Alexandria Real Estate Property and Industrial Road and the NBC Building on Brighton Avenue. And have taken meetings in the past with Premier Princeton, um a rep for Black Mountain Properties. And more recently, Presidio Bay and Sabato. My decisions this evening will not be influenced by those discussions. Does anyone else have anything to disclose relative to tonight's topics or discussion? Let's see, Vice Mayor McDowell's hand is up. And then we'll go to Councilmember Rack, Dugan, and then uh Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too wanted to disclose that I have toured the Alexandria property. Uh I've also taken meetings with Black Mountain, Premier, and Presidio Bay. Um but these uh meetings were just informational in nature and um will not have any bearing on my vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack, and then Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've also taken a a number of meetings. So I believe the only place I've done since we started the vision plan was Alexandria. But I have in the past met with Black Mountain, NBC. Uh I did actually meet with Presidio uh Bay and Premier uh as well. Uh since the the vision plan was in place, but these uh meetings will not, uh they were informational and will not affect my decision-making tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And uh yes, I too have toured the Alexandria uh new construction on Industrial. And I've met with them uh as well as NBC Bio Labs, Primera, Black Mountain Properties, and Presidio Bay. And uh they were informational and helpful and uh will not affect my decision-making this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Collins.
Yeah, I would, I would uh concur. I've met really only with Alexandria and Presidio Bay. Uh obviously, I've met with Black Mountain, but that was quite a while ago. As the other council members mentioned, my meetings were also informational and will have no effect on my decision-making.
Thank you. Okay, uh we'll move to the question portion of our discussion this evening. All right, I'll start with Councilmember Rack and then uh Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh Lisa, thanks for the presentation and and really want to thank everyone for all the uh hard work on this. It really come together nicely. And appreciate all the input that you've you've put together from the community and all the community participation in this um as well. Uh I had a couple of quick questions. Can someone walk me through on just some of the timing? We've got a number of projects sort of in the queue and we've talked about, there's things, I I believe there's some policy changes recommended in this vision plan. Uh the the shuttle is requiring further study, but so can someone walk me through the timing and the process of this? Because we could be approving plans uh or doing development agreements, but yet we haven't studied the shuttle as an example or or had that as part of it. Just as an example, and and so I'm just curious, or like the activity hubs, is that going to require some zoning changes? And what's sort of the timeline and timing to make this all work?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Rack. Um so there's, the timing is um. Going to have a sort of a multi-pronged uh approach and. Um for instance, with the shuttles, um the way it would be uh approached is. Um each of these developments would be required in their PPD uh plan. Um to become a member of any kind of transportation demand management. Or transportation management agency in the future. So they will need to um agree to some future um uh agreements. Um before the, likely before we know exactly what they're going to be. And so there is, you know, I think the developers, the stakeholders have understood this. In watching the process um as it's progressed. So they they know and they've, uh many of them that we have discussed this issue. And others with, understand that they're going to have to become partners um in this um in this program. So that's how we are going to attempt to do it with things like the shuttle. Um we we won't have to change the zoning. Um to address things like hubs. Those would also be part of development projects as they come forward. Um the uh the plan shows the locations of where these things should be. And so if if you're a developer and you see, um hey, this um area. Has this um this hub and it's on my property, then you, that's exactly what. The plan is intended to do is it's intended to signal ahead of time what these developers need to do. So hopefully that that starts to answer your question.
Thank you. No, that's really helpful. I just was, can, just want to make sure I understood the timeline correctly. And my second question uh that I have, and then I'll, I will uh yield back my time. Um when i- in the area that you talk about, we're potentially studying for housing in a sort of buffer zone on Terminal and you touch on tank ledge. Uh I'm assuming that if that change i- i- were to go into effect, that would require zoning change and that would ultimately. If we, if sort of that was the way the study recommended, we'd have to sort of consider that as part of the housing element. So some of this stuff now would sort of expand the area you're potentially looking at for the housing element. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. And so what we would need to do, uh if the council wants to study these areas in the future. What we would likely need to do is bring a scope of work back to the city council to add it into. The existing housing element update. And so we would work with our consultant, uh separate consultant from this this plan. And we would bring back a new scope of work and a work program for you to approve. Um now, it would be separate from, this is a separate issue. For instance, if you're. One option would be to just see if you can make the arena based on what we know today. So that's one option. Is the council could decide not to do this. You could either do it or not. But one, one option would be to um take a a little bit of a wait-and-see approach. Uh and see what happens with the areas that we're currently studying for um more density, more height. And see if you hit your arena number. You could still, I mean, even if you hit your arena number in the areas that are zoned for residential. You could always expand study to other areas like this one. Um but that's another approach. Is to just kind of take a wait-and-see and then direct staff at that time. And yeah, we want, we want you to go ahead and study these areas. So there's really two options for you.
Got it. Understood. Great. Thank you, Al. Uh thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack, Councilmember Dugan, and then we'll go to Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And you know, I guess uh coming into this process. Uh uh it felt open-ended to me that we were going to study the vision of uh what we want to do as a city on our east side. And um I don't recall a constraint put on uh that exercise on would it involve any zoning or general plan changes? So um given that, you know, as as uh your report even says, that the number one input we've received from the public. Our Transportation and Circulation Commission, our uh Planning Commission, and even this council. Was to um address housing potential on the east side. I'm just curious, um you know, why wouldn't we have considered laying out or uh developing a vision on how we would go about. Changing the general plan or or zoning otherwise uh to address this uh, you know, very clear community concern. And um and 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 secondly, you know, I understand housing has been put into. Uh the big move number five, but I just point out, you know, given that was our number one feedback we've received from a number of fronts. Um why wouldn't it have uh achieved a big move uh that would address or help us formulate our vision on housing? And I notice it's uh not even one of the forty or so principles under the big moves. Uh any discussion of housing is in this has been relegated to uh subbullets number four under principles. And it and it simply talks about studying the potential of housing. I'm just curious. Uh you know, why is this uh vision plan been so constrained in that way? Given I I don't recall us constraining it to uh, you know, what could we do without any adjustments uh to our general plan?
Okay. So um, thank you for the question. Um so there's a number of different paths that the city considered. And the council considered at the beginning of the process. And so there were, you know, various options that the city could have. Used in looking at this air, this particular area. Um the, there was an acknowledgement and understanding that the city was already going to study housing. Very in a, a very in-depth way as part of the required housing element update. And so we we, the city knew that that was happening. It was underway. Uh we knew that we had to respond to the arena requirements that we had. And so there was, there was already a plan in place to look at zoning and general plan amendments um needed. For more housing in our community. So so there was an acknowledgement that there was already a big um project and big scope. And and a lot of resources were devoted to that already. Now, the city could have taken a couple of different approaches to this area and and the council did look at. Um a couple of different ways to go about it. One way would have been to do a more um robust plan that would have taken a couple of years. And and would have probably been about a million dollars. And it would, it it's called a specific plan. And specific plans are a tool that allows cities to look at zoning in the general plan in a specific area. And then craft that area um for um these changes that you would want. And that that can include housing. Um but again, that was a a very long, in-depth process. At the same time, we were doing a very in-depth housing element update already. So the tactical approach that the city decided to take at the inception of the process was to take a more tactical approach. And um in recognition as well that the marketplace had evolved. And there were, we had all these applications for developments. Um they, the city had been working with some of these developers for more than a year. On many of these development projects. And so um the city took a tactical approach to do a shorter timeframe. And achieve some of the um things that Lisa talked about in her presentation. And take a more holistic approach um to the study area. And so by doing that, um we we get our holistic approach and we address a lot of the big picture areas. Um and we provide very clear guidance uh for the marketplace. But this plan won't be able to change zoning in the general plan to make, to allow for this. This type of land use to occur. So that's kind of the the um strategy. Um that the city took. And as, and just to finish. What Lisa said earlier about the housing element, um that is where you can still look at housing. And and as noted, you can still look at housing in this particular area, but through the lens of the and the program. Uh for the housing element update.
Yeah, thank you, Al. That last point I wanted to explore a bit more. I mean, to what extent can we uh incorporate more thinking on housing? In our east side as part of the uh housing element update? Because the housing element update is in fact an amendment to our general plan, correct?
That's right. It's entirely up to the city council.
Okay. And are there constraints on that as far as to what extent we can consider housing on the east side? Through the revision of our housing element?
Um theoretically, there are no constraints. Um but, I mean, there may be challenges to doing that, right? I mean, we, for instance, we've heard from some of the businesses in the area who are concerned. About how housing could impact their ability to do business and expand some of their businesses and things like that. So there there certainly will be challenges to doing it, but theoretically, there's no constraint.
And uh to what extent is additional housing on the east side being considered in this housing element update?
Well, it's not right now.
Okay. And then uh my final question, different topic. Uh there was a, sounded me like a rather informed uh public comment during the last planning commission meeting. Um where a um uh one of our residents uh asked about the biosafety levels. That we're going to be allowing into San Carlos. Uh sounded like he might actually work in the life science industry. And I was just struck by the fact that as a council member, considering our our vision for the east side. And that most of the applicants before us appear to be developing significant life science projects. I was just struck by the fact that I I really didn't know what he was talking about and was very uh uninformed. And so my question is, to what extent uh have we considered uh what levels of biosafety uh we're willing to have into our community? And uh was that any part of our outreach to the public? Uh you know, I mean, part of this document is to. was that any part of our outreach to the public? You know, I mean, part of this document is to communicate our intent as a city to these life science developers that are coming to town. And, you know, to what extent are we, do we have a, a, a handle on what we want to signal in this regard?
Well, we haven't really studied the issue. It would require further study to kind of understand it better, for all of us to understand it better, but we know a little bit. And what we know in talking to some of the providers, some of the life science folks, the developers, is that bioscient, bio lab levels one and two are very common in communities throughout the Bay Area and throughout the state. As you get higher up into the bio level area like three, they become more, much more rare in terms of how many of them you see. And level four is very, very rare and, and unlikely, you're unlikely to see those. But still, we haven't done much study. If the council wanted to address this issue in the plan, you could at this time. And one, there's a couple of different approaches that you could take. And one would be is to say that because bio levels one and two, and I think the Dimitri Vandelos in the GSC in his letter to the city council earlier noted that they would think that bio levels one and two are somewhat excessive. Okay, in this plan, but they're more concerned about three and four. That being said, one approach would be to add language to the plan that says bio levels one and two are okay, but anything above bio levels one and two would require something like a conditional use permit or further study. So that's, that's an approach we can take on this.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, everyone. Thank you to the team for all of the great work on this plan. I was also going to ask about the biosafety hazard levels, so I'm glad that that was touched on by my colleague already. And I guess my first question then will be around goal three, environmental stewardship. I appreciate the revised language requiring new development proposals be reviewed for legally required remediation by authorities like the State Water Board. And I thought when we reviewed that language, that by working with state and federal entities like the EPA, that that would be enough to see some of the toxic sites that were polluted decades ago cleaned up. But then I watched the planning commission meeting last Monday where a project on Bragato Robes approved. And the soil at that site is contaminated with PCBs, which are toxic industrial compounds. And just to give one sentence update or background for my colleagues, one hotspot at that site will be excavated and disposed of under EPA's oversight. And other lower level areas will, under EPA and water board's direction, be capped in place with an engineered cap. And hearing that the EPA and the water boards less capping these PCBs in the soil is very disheartening. And as these properties in the east side change hands, I think we have a generational opportunity to really clean them up. And so my question is, is there anything the city can do to push for real cleanup of these toxic sites instead of capping some of them in place? And what tools do we have in our toolbox under this goal to promote environmental stewardship to, to really enhance the cleanup efforts?
Well, to some extent, the city's, you know, the city has a limited framework to require something of a private property owner, and this may be something that Greg can weigh in on, above what the overseeing agencies say is okay. So if the EPA says something or the Department of Toxic Substances Control says something, you're, you know, the city might be somewhat limited. However, the, if, if a developer asks you for a plan development permit which would trigger a development agreement, that does give the city some more leeway and flexibility to ask for things that go above and beyond basic requirements. But, but I can't be specific with regard to, you know, the level of, you know, that the city could ask for, for a particular environmental cleanup or anything like that. But I can tell you that you do have some flexibility with those tools. But again, we, you know, we don't know what our legal authority is at, at this point. We'd have to look into that a little bit more to find, you know, what you could, how far you could get with your, you know, the authority that you do have.
Hey, Al, I, I agree with Al, Al's points. And I would just add that essentially the question is a jurisdictional one. And the state has jurisdiction over groundwater and water quality, you know, surface waters. And then there's, you know, other, there's federal agencies that have control over when, when waters flow into the waters of the United States. You know, like via creeks into the bay and things of that nature. So my, my concern is that we want to make sure we stay in our lane, so to speak, and have, if we're going to apply a regulation or an ask that we, that we are in compliance and not exceeding our jurisdiction. So we've been certain, I mean, your, this, this plan could have a, you know, a statement that in light of your sentiments, Councilman McDowell, I mean, that, that we want to ensure that the, that, that all the appropriate regulations are followed. But at a certain point, in the absence of our own jurisdiction to impose those regulations, we, we really can only condition a project based upon what the authorities with jurisdiction can do.
Okay. Thank you both. I'll, I'll circle back on my comments on that. And my second question, and then I'll defer to my other colleagues. And this has to do with community benefits. And I know that we had quite a few discussions about new baseline requirements that would be required of all development projects. And it's, it's a very exciting change for us to, to require new things as baseline requirements. And I'm wondering what the process is and the timeline is for, for codifying those, those new baseline requirements.
So because there's, there's numerous baseline requirements, as you, as you know, and each of them, you know, will require the amount of study and effort depending on the complexity of that particular subject. You know, if it's streets or if it's other things, you know, it, it just depends on the level of study and, and effort that goes into it. So it will be a multi-layered and, and the timeline of each of these things, you know, some things will come faster than others. We don't have exact scopes of work and, you know, times for and budgets for these things, but we know that some of them are already in the works. For instance, we have a daycare, a childcare fee, a commercial linkage fee that the city has been working on with the council subcommittee. That's something that's noted in your, in your community benefits. So some of these things, we, we've done a little bit of work. And so we will, we will need to come back to the city council with a full view of each of these things that we want to do and look at resources and look at times for each of those things. So we will come back to you with that. So it's various times and that, and various scopes and budgets. Sorry, I don't have a more direct answer for you there.
That's okay. It's a lot to tackle. I understand. Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'll defer my time now.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Al, in section eight on, I think it's the multimodal section. There's a section there on exploring potential for one-way, a couplet on Terminal Way and Tankledge Road. I'm not really clear what the benefit of that would be. What, what was the thinking behind that?
I'm going to hand this question off to Stephen Machida. Stephen, and I think that the TNC recently took a look at some programs in that area. So maybe Stephen can address that question. Stephen, are you?
Yes. Very good. Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I believe the couplet, this is, you're referring to Terminal and Tankledge. The couplet? I believe that was really in the case and, and, you know, perhaps probably the consultant could help me, but I believe what this was really is trying to address is because both roads or the roads are fairly narrow there. And, you know, what they've seen is on street parking as a result of some of the businesses there. In some cases, people were double parked. And that made the street very, very narrow. Where, you know, through traffic could not pass by. And so by actually doing a couple, essentially it's making this one-way street. So I think in their figure, I guess page number sixty-six, they do talk about that. Where Tankledge, I believe Tankledge is going eastbound, or excuse me, westbound. And Terminal is going eastbound, excuse me. I think Tankledge is going westbound. Terminal is going eastbound. Except where it meets up at Bayport, where then from Bayport going kind of west of Bayport, it would go two-way traffic in both directions. But really is kind of addressed kind of the narrowness of the street as well as providing a little bit more right of way for parking and, and ability, ability to kind of move traffic.
Okay, that, that, that makes sense. Thank you for that. And my, my other question was on the the part on integrating recycled water infrastructure, which I'm very pleased to see is, is part of this plan. I realize that there's a, it's probably a big ask at this point of, for potential developers to put in or plan for water recycling, recycling infrastructure, purple pipe ready and all of that. But I'm just wondering if it would make any sense for us to create sort of a recycling infrastructure fund, something that where we would allocate a certain portion of developer fees toward that purpose so that we could maybe use that to possibly get matching state or federal funds? Is, is that something that, that we could possibly explore at some point?
Certainly. I think that is something a reasonable ask to explore. You know, I mean, I have had discussions with Cal Water. As you and council as well, where Cal Water is our water purveyor. It's my understanding, however, Cal Water, because they're the water purveyor, they kind of have first rights as far as all kinds of water, whether it's potable and recycled water. So certainly I'm in discussion with them and see, you know, if they have the ability to kind of extend some of their facilities or infrastructure into San Carlos. And, and, you know, so far, my, my preliminary discussions with them, it's been very positive. I think they're, they're looking forward to you know, extending all water, you know, whatever's available into San Carlos as well.
All right. Thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Madam Mayor. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions you all asked, many of the ones I had as well. Just to go back to some of the feedback that we received from some community members via email this week. The, kind of the policy around multimodal station usage and the idea around reducing congestion through coordinated transportation strategies. There was a ask if there's a possibility of being a little bit more specific around shuttle landing around the El Camino side of the train station. So Al, if you could talk to us a little bit about, you know, I appreciate that, let me first off by say, start by saying that I appreciate that the purpose of the vision plan is to be high level and provide guidance and direction and policy statements and not to get super technical and, you know, so that we, we don't get too far ahead of ourselves. But could you just talk a little bit about, you know, what the possibilities might be? Because I think there's an interest in wanting to explore shuttle landing on the, on the west side of the train station, if you will, on El Camino Real side.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes. So, yeah, we saw the inquiry from the GSC and we think that, we agree that it could be more clear in the document in terms of addressing their concern. And so if staff could make us suggest some suggested language here for your consideration, we'd like to do, to do that. And and Lisa, if you could bring up the slide for section nine, planning strategy nine that we saw earlier. And there's a, there's a section in there under strategy nine that we saw earlier, action I, it says, and, and it's really difficult to read on the lower right-hand corner of the screen there. But it talks about conduct a feasibility analysis of shuttle services. And that's what I think you were referring to, Madam Mayor. And there's a whole bunch of bullet points there. And there's one about the fifth bullet point down. It says routing, key issues to investigate. And then it says routing and staff would suggest putting in parentheses, including the kiss and ride pickup and drop off area in the Caltrain parking lot off of El Camino Real. And so we wanted to be real clear to folks that that should be, that routing location should be studied as well. So it's very clear to everybody that it's not just the old county side, but it would also be the El Camino side. So that's some suggested language and we can come back to that if you're interested.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. And then with respect to the housing, there was also a concern around the request to study mixed use residential and other high-density residential that, and the implication was within the half mile. And I think, Lisa, you addressed this to some degree in your conversation earlier today. But again, is there an opportunity to, you know, be more precise in the language that supports the, the idea here?
Yeah, maybe Lisa can point out a location for more specific language in this area, or you can add it and we could, we could just put it in.
Right. Because I, she, yeah, because I think, I know she spoke to it, but I don't know if the, if the policy statement reflects that.
Yeah, I think, I think it could be, it could be further clarified. And, and the map was intended to be added additive. So the map right after this slide that you see, the intent was to add that to be even more clear that it wasn't the residential neighborhood next door. So Lisa, maybe we can find a location to be more specific if the council sees fit.
Yes. Thank you, Al, and thank you, Mayor. Our suggestion, I think, in a question that came up earlier on this, and looking at what's on the screen right now under principle A, action four, study the potential for introducing mixed use residential development and other high-density housing and other high-density residential in the plan, in, in the, within the vision plan boundary only. I think that's where we said we would add the language.
Thank you. All right. I see. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So Councilmember Dugan's hand is up. And if there's no more questions after this, we can move to public comment.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one additional question. And I don't think I noticed this the last time we looked at this plan. But I was just surprised reading it about the, especially I think I noticed in along industrial, the, the twenty-six-foot mandatory setback to create a street wall. I just, I, I would just like to understand the thinking behind that better. I realize the activity hubs are excluded from that. So maybe having a street wall will further emphasize the, the activity hubs. But I, I just, you know, typical design principles involve articulation and breaking up straight lines. And these are already going to be, you know, in many cases, fairly massive glass rectangles. So I'm just curious, what, what is the thinking behind a mandatory consistent setback creating a street wall?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to call on Yee T, our consultant, to try this question. Yee T?
Sure. I'll give it a try. The idea was the word street wall might be kind of limiting a little bit. A second, this slide is not working. The idea is that twenty-six feet is the word that we need to kind of really focus on. It's about creating a really generous and inviting sidewalk where, if possible, you could have double roll-off trees and that could be really welcoming and then and a comfortable public rent. And the idea is that twenty, minimum twenty-six feet of a sidewalk in the street. And the idea is that twenty, minimum twenty-six feet of a sidewalk in the street facade after that could either sit at that twenty-six feet or could be beyond that, that it shouldn't encroach on that twenty-six feet. And it could be articulated. We don't necessarily get too specific, other than in the architectural um, um, design kind of guideline. We don't uh, indicate a whole lot about architectural preferences. But the idea is really to focus on the twenty-six feet, making that a minimum consistent uh, generous uh, public rent.
Got it. No, I mean, I, I'm all for the wide generous sidewalks, especially, you know, as the um, um, you know, the, the garden path or whatever we're calling that, the Green Boulevard, uh, like that. But I, am I wrong? I thought I saw in this plan that it's a, it, it's a mandatory setback, not a minimum setback and, and tied to the word "street wall." That, 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 that's really my, so I, I'm just, I didn't read that correctly. It's, it's just a minimum setback?
I think so. Any, am I right? Any there?
Yeah, sorry. So it, it is as written now. I would say that it's um, it's intended to provide consistency. So it's looking to see the edge of building sort of coming up to the same location to create a consistent experience along the street. Um, but like you said, GT, it, the intention is really about creating that sidewalk experience, not necessarily the, the building um, uh, guidelines.
Okay, but it is a minimum.
Council member, to answer your question, yes, it's a minimum. But it doesn't preclude, at this time, it doesn't preclude buildings from sitting back farther than that.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, I haven't seen any further questions from council, so Crystal, if we could go to public comments, please.
Okay, looks like we have three hands up at the moment. First speaker is Sam Hersberg. You should be able to unmute, and he'll be followed by Debbie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I just had two comments. One was just echoing the concerns of Vice Mayor McDowell about um, you know, the presence of toxins in soils on the east side. And I think your climate plan and your sea level plot, plan, and the goal of that is very, very noble. Um, but it's all in the implementation. You can have a levee and you can hold back the sea, but that doesn't mean that the groundwater is not going to rise and that the toxics that are in the soil may also not rise. And uh, I think if you look at Paul Maginetti's letter from a Greater East San Carlos board, he referred to the Tankledge sledgepot and uh, there were toxics that were leaching out of the bathroom tile. And, and that's the kind of concern that we really have on the east side is you could cap something, but you know, i-if you have a chance to clean it up, it's a kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And um, being a land use planner with the county, I know that local jurisdiction sometimes can actually be more protective than some uh, state, state regulations in some cases. So um, I wouldn't limit the city to uh, be more protective about your future land use and the safety of your community and future climate change and what it could do. And my other comment was about Eastside Connect, which was a really great project the city engaged in with the Greater East San Carlos Board to underground our, our electrical lines and widen our sidewalks. We had sidewalks with the electrical power lines in them that moms with strollers had to walk into the street to get around the power lines and pigeons were dropping, you know, droppings on our heads as we were walking down the street. And um, all of those electrical lines were undergrounded and the sidewalks widened. We have green infrastructure.
Thank you, thank you.
And I, I just want to say, the project was supposed to continue to the south and the current plan does not include that. And to be transit-oriented but not have a sidewalk to walk on is a mistake.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, we now have eight hands up. So next speaker is Debbie, followed by Dawn. And if you can use the timer that's shown on the screen, we'd really appreciate that. Debbie, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I would like to comment on Vice Mayor McDowell's important questions about environmental remediation. And it is disheartening to hear from our city attorney that the city's desire to go above and beyond the minimal mitigation required by the federal, the federal and state authorities is not in the city council's jurisdiction and that the city council should quote "stay in its lane." That seems to render meaningless the quote "new baseline requirements such as cleaning up Holgus Creek." And I agree with Mr. Hersberg, who uh, spoke earlier, that the city can certainly go above and beyond um, if it does so correctly. So for example, the zoning, for people that want housing to be zoned in the heavy industrial, that should absolutely be prohibited because you can't have a daycare in that area. So building houses in that area that will have children seems to be incredibly unsafe. And in addition, Alexandria has the dirt uncovered now. So all this rain just took all of those toxins down into the groundwater. And what's being done about that? And then number two, with regard to the biosafety hazard labs, the PETA organization has recently uncovered brutal testing on beagle puppies and monkeys. And I think that the city should take a stand about what kind of animal testing will be allowed in these biosafety labs. Because for the people that were speaking earlier about the importance of walking their dogs off-leash, the idea that there could be animal experimentation involving puppies, dogs, monkeys, and other primates in the city limits is unconscionable. So please consider that as you move forward in looking at the biosafety labs and what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. Next up is Dawn, followed by Sandy Nierenberg.
Hi, thank you for taking our calls. I attended um, the east side workshops as well as the 2040 housing workshops. And in the 2040 meetings, as you all heard in your meeting, the density and height changes proposed are difficult to accommodate due to the current residential areas. Because basically, there's not many areas in San Carlos that can handle the height and the amount of new residents close to our current transit that we need to meet our RENA numbers. This area, in my opinion, is perfect. While I understand the industry of San Carlos is also needed, it's not as important as finding more how, housing areas that we can zone for these large housing structures. In the east side workshops, the housing concern was brought up many times. It's clear that the voices were heard, but they still didn't get integrated into the ten big moves. There's been lots of ideas to address this, but they weren't put into any significant changes into this vision plan. And um, thank you, council member Dugan and other council members for addressing this housing need. Um, the, the proposed area of Tankledge, it borders the residential neighborhoods that are not great for these huge eight-story structures that are needed to get these density numbers. I urge the city council not to approve this plan without incorporating a housing requirement into the ten big moves. The job growth that's being proposed will hurt our housing needs even more, and it needs to be addressed with, especially with its prime location of transit. I would like a big move to include all of this area rezoned for residential and as well as industrial use. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you. Next up is Sandy Nierenberg, followed by David Crabbe.
Good evening, city council and staff. Thank you for taking the time tonight to speak about this really important topic. Um, just for context, I am the chair of the Transportation and Circulation Commission, although I am of course here and speaking tonight as an individual and not on behalf of the commission. Um, I just want to strongly urge the city council, as the prior speaker said, not to approve the plan tonight. I am sorely disappointed by the development-first and really development-only approach of this plan. Um, as has been mentioned many times tonight, this vision has been narrowed often by staff and coincidentally, after a long prior history of work with developers. And that really shows through in the priorities of this plan. It really feels to myself and to others that eagerness to push through development has blinded the city to the tremendous once-in-a-generation opportunity to address major and longstanding challenges through a broad and comprehensive vision. And that vision must include housing and it must include transportation. Housing should be the big move number one in this plan. It should not be relegated to a sub-sub-sub point that might be studied at some point in the future. Everything within the half-mile Caltrain radius should prioritize high-density housing and mixed-use. Housing isn't even possible in the area on Tankledge that's currently slated to maybe be studied in the future because as the prior speaker just mentioned, we've got height and bulk transition requirements between the single-family residences and any high-density housing that might be considered. Also, transportation needs must consider the impact to the entire city, not just east side San Carlos. This includes a clear vision of how traffic is going to flow east-west through San Carlos to the two-eighties through major arteries. So I really strongly urge you, please do not consider this without a clear vision on those issues.
Thank you, Sandy. Next up, we have David Crabbe, followed by Mark Ober.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Um, I also would refer that you not approve the east side innovation district right now until the run, the revision of the housing element is complete and you are satisfied that the housing element will meet the challenge of eight thousand to ten thousand new jobs in the city's pipeline. For the past thirty years, cities up and down the peninsula, including San Carlos, have not connected the number and types of jobs in their community with the number and affordability of their housing stock. This has driven up the cost of housing to astronomical levels due to the basic law of supply and demand. We have too many jobs, too few houses. This has been great for those of us who already own a home in San Carlos, which I assume includes all of the members of the city council. We're all millionaires. But what of all those people who currently do not own a home or don't have an annual income of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or more, which is pretty much what's needed to buy a new home today? They, they are falling further and further behind, and that's totally unsustainable. If we uncritically accept the eight thousand to ten thousand new jobs anticipated in the east side, we will greatly negate any progress we may make toward increasing our overall housing supply. The RENA numbers are much too low. Uh, twenty-seven hundred is not four thousand to five thousand units, about half of it. Um, separating planning for the largest increase in jobs in our city's history from our ability to provide enough housing for those employees is a recipe for failure. It will only increase income inequality in our city, drive essential middle and lower-income workers away because housing costs are too high. Uh, we need to get the housing straightened out in this thing, and this is a real driver of housing and high cost, housing costs. And when a inequality, a city of income inequality is not a city of good living. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up, we have uh, former San Carlos mayor and council member Mark Ober, and he'll be followed by Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Palmer-Lohan and the rest of the council for giving me this chance to address you. San Carlos has historically prioritized commercial development over residential. That has helped our local finances, but it has also harmed the regional, state, national, and global communities that we are all a part of. That focus consigns those who work in San Carlos to increasingly terrible commutes. It causes significant ongoing damage to the global environment. It worsens traffic on our highways and it forces most of our children to leave because they cannot afford to live here. All of this and more epitomizes self-centeredness, which is not at all consistent with the values that make San Carlos what it is. We need to alter course. We need plans that result in more housing that meets the needs of ordinary people. Unfortunately, the council chose to address commercial and residential development separately and outside a general plan review because staff did not believe it could be done, even though other communities routinely do so. The east side plan has many desirable features, and I'm glad the housing element is being updated. But allowing the unprecedented level of commercial development to proceed before finalizing a housing plan is a mistake. By dealing with commercial interests first, it extends our past damaging practices into the future. Worst yet, it gives up important leverage and complicates engaging with commercial developers as partners in addressing the housing crisis. Please defer approving the plan. Wait until you've finished a real housing plan so you can better judge what level of commercial development is reasonable. I very much doubt doing so will offend residents and it will buy you the time to do what's right to keep San Carlos the city of good living.
Thank you, Mark. Next up is Brian, followed by Suzanne Emerson. Brian, you should be able to unmute. Okay, let's go ahead and.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello. Uh, 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 Mayor Palmer-Lohan and members of the city council. This is Brian Ponte. A few brief comments. I prefer to see a housing component and specifically inclusion of a direct provision for low-income housing. The jobs housing imbalance prevalent in this area is something you can begin to do something about. Adopting a plan that could result up in up to ten thousand new jobs in this community without a plan uh, for housing is a bit perplexing. If cities do not start dealing with this, there are plenty of people in Sacramento that will do so, and we've seen that action. It will do so in a way that serves your ability to make a number of land use decisions such as eliminating single-family zoning. This is an excellent place to begin doing so, and I suggest that you include a housing component in this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Next up is Suzanne Emerson. You should be able to unmute, followed by Paul Maginetti.
Thank you, Suzanne Emerson here. I'd first like to uh, thank staff and consultants for your work on the vision plan. I'm pleased to see the features of this vision plan include a multimodal transportation, walkable environments, tree shading, shared parking, and stream restoration. My concern is that we do not have a plan in place for accounting for housing. According to the September staff report that accompanied the climate mitigation and adaptation plan, the projected square footage of development increases new jobs in San Carlos by over eleven thousand six hundred jobs. San Carlos doesn't have a plan and doesn't even appear to be making a plan for accommodating housing for anything close to that many new employees. The housing element update that is currently in progress, according to the project's website, is only aiming for about twenty-seven hundred new housing units, which is far lower than the anticipated jobs increase. I feel it is in the community's best interest to have a housing plan that matches the scope of the east side vision plan, pairing plans for increased housing density to accommodate the increased number of employees. I encourage the city council to delay adoption of the east side vision plan until a housing plan is adopted to accommodate the same number of new employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Uh, next up is Paul Maginetti, followed by Jennifer Rose.
Uh, hi, members of council. My name's Paul Maginetti with San Carlos. Um, I'd like to talk a bit why the language currently under environment stewardship is, is inadequate in that if we're just punting and kicking the ball over to the jurisdictional authority, it, it's really not adequate, and I'll explain why. The, the former side of the Honda dealership, they did an experimental remediation for the T, the P-T-C-E that they have there, and they just left it. I reviewed that data. It was not effective. So we got nothing out of that, even though a jurisdictional authority approved it. Now they're moving to an area adjacent to Delta Star, which is the most contaminated PCB site on the peninsula. Um, and I just recently found out about this site too, without an opportunity to talk to the jurisdictional authority. In fact, when I look on their site for public input, it says, "We expect little or, little or no public interest at this site." I don't know how they made that determination. However, I'm definitely going to reach out to that jurisdictional authority and, and and give them my input. So in, under three A, the last sentence there says, "Collaborate with authorities to ensure all relevant remediation requirements are met." Um, I'm wondering, is there somebody on staff who has that core competency? Um, I really think it should be amended to say, "Public input shall also be invited." If you let us give input to the jurisdictional authority- If you let us give input to the jurisdictional authority, we'll put pressure on them to do the right thing if the city's unwilling. And the last thing I would say is that Al's comment on conditional use for BSL3 is a good one. I would say conditional use for BSL4 as you move it to the Nevada desert. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sam. And thank you, Paul. Next up is Jennifer Rosé, followed by Brian Perkins.
My name's Jennifer Rossi, and actually, my husband Daniel is here too, so we'll try to fit in in two minutes. It might be a little bit more. And we live in East San Carlos, and so I just wanted to sort of echo what some of the other people said. I agree 100% that the holistic planning for San Carlos is really important, thinking about the housing, the commercial development, the traffic flow. I mean, I don't know that this is part of it, but even like how people get here, is the whole freeway going to get backed up, like what happened when they opened Facebook? Like, you know, really being comprehensive in the planning before approving something, I think is really important. And then also, a lot of talk about housing and low-income housing, I think, is necessary, but I just really want to take a minute and call out like the people that are really essential for our community, teachers, police, firefighters, and like making provisions for those people and not just planning for the biotech workers who aren't here, but we have a lot of teachers that can't afford to live here either. And so if there's a way to build in something to support our teachers and our schools and our firefighters and our police officers and what's really essential for our community to continue to thrive, I think is really important as well. And then also just the piece about the high-density housing. There's a lot of places it could go in San Carlos. Maybe East San Carlos is one, but there's probably a lot of other places as well. And sometimes it sounds like people think, "Let's just put everything on the east side." So maybe spreading it out and then thinking about how the traffic would be impacted also, I think, would be really important. And then I'm going to hand it over to my husband.
Just a quick question. It seems like I'm hearing a lot of people talking about the housing. I just don't think that East San Carlos is half of San Carlos, so I don't think we should try to put half of our housing issue in East San Carlos.
Is that it? Then also, thanks for asking. Sorry, one more thing, the traffic flow, mitigating the traffic flow in East San Carlos. Thanks for building that into the plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Daniel.
Next up, we have Brian Perkins, followed by Dimitri.
Thank you very much for the council. I appreciate this opportunity. I think that you ought to put this Vision Plan over. Unfortunately, right from the get-go, we were told as participants in this development of this plan that housing wasn't going to be one of the discussion items. So I watched the first meeting briefly. I watched the second one. I think I also raised the housing issue in the second one, having been told once or twice. I took the hint and I dropped out of any other meeting. And it seems odd that we're doing a 1960s development style here, using updated graphics. I grew up in the Bay Area. I can remember so many times when industrial parks were developed and housing was an afterthought. In fact, in the town that I grew up in in Santa Fe, they're still doing housing around a major industrial park that they developed back in the 60s. That's just terrible planning, and that's exactly what we're doing here tonight. I'm pleased that someone decided that they needed to put the subject of housing into the plan somehow. I just wanted to be noted that the subject of housing was there right from the get-go and then prohibited as a substantive contribution to the work product. So put it over. The only people that are going to benefit from clarity on this are the developers, and I have to say, that's fine by me. I actually like developers. I think developers are great. I don't think that that's the only person, or excuse me, the only entity that I'd be given consideration when the City Council was acting. I think the council ought to be considerate of the people who don't have a voice ordinarily, be it the teachers, the firefighters, or the grocery clerks. All of them are going to suffer tremendously. At its heart, this is a really cruel plan, simply because you haven't formally committed to doing housing. You're going to talk about it on that site, but you haven't actually formally committed to doing it. Please wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Next up is Dimitri, followed by Ellen Dooley.
Yes, hi. Can folks hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. Yeah, I'm just going to ask for a little indulgence. Ben Fuller and Patty and Scott Marsters have ceded some time to me, so I'm not planning on going way over two minutes, but I'm just asking for a little bit more time. So I want to thank the council for commissioning the study in the first place. I'm hearing some strong feedback about housing, and I think that's great. I love the community involvement, but I do want to acknowledge the fact that council did ask for commissioning the study in the first place, and there may be some issues with, you know, how we specifically are going about it, but I do think that we're getting a much better dialogue as a result of that. I also want to thank staff for the updates to the plan from the letter that was sent out earlier in the week. I think that's very helpful to see. I also want to thank Vice Mayor McDowell for discussing 495 Pregato, talking about just, you know, concrete paving over a known toxic site is not necessarily the right thing to do. And I'm very concerned about what the comment that was made about, quote, "Staying in Our Lane" regarding toxins. I mean, that's the kind of attitude that allowed things like the Flint Water Crisis and other environmental catastrophes in this country to occur. What we have found as a community group is that the more involvement from community and civic input into the environmental issues, it always leads to far better remediation efforts. So just kind of washing our hands of this and pretending that it doesn't matter is, I think, is very problematic. I think we should consider hiring an environmental expert on the staff that could help sort of pave the way and work with the governing agencies to make sure that we get better results. I want to acknowledge really good points on housing and commercial balance. I'm not 100% sure about, you know, whether or not we need to hold off on approving this plan or not. Initially, we did ask for including the residential neighborhood, and we talked a lot. The GESC neighborhood did talk a lot about housing at the onset. And I want to thank the commoner for talking about housing, doing housing that's proportional relative to the entire city. These are all great points. I'm really, really happy to see such great community involvement from everyone present and all the speakers. Regarding biosafety hazards, I did put in the letter, you know, I think we should talk about...
Dimitri, could you just hang on? Greg Rubens? Procedurally, is it acceptable to allow him to go past the two minutes? I recognize I'm supposed to provide everyone equal time, so could you provide guidance here, please?
I think the speaker mentioned that other speakers had indicated they would not speak so that he could have a little more time, and I think we've historically done that, but it's still within your discretion to provide a reasonable amount of time. We don't have like a rote, you know, or requirement that if somebody cedes their time, that the other person gets all that additional time. It's just, it's, but we have a lot of people to speak longer than the two minutes when they've indicated that other people want them to speak for them.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Greg, for the clarification. Thank you, Dimitri. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, my intent isn't to take the full time. Forgot exactly where I went. Oh, yeah, the proportional housing, I thought was a really good comment. The biosafety hazards, I think we should consider just outright banning Level 4. That's some really dangerous stuff, and the conditional use permit perhaps for Level 3, that might be a good compromise for us to consider. I would like a little stronger language regarding using the multimodal station for any TDM shuttles, and we were very, you know, grateful to have a little bit of clarity on the high-density housing. I did like seeing the perimeter, and it feels to me that along Old County Road, we could certainly extend that as we move south, all the way to commercial, and just because it doesn't fit within the half-mile, we really ought to consider industrial, you know, as a potential, as long as a proper environmental remediation is done. So I think let's really focus on how we can do a better job with environmental remediation on all of the projects that are in front of the city, and like, you know, perhaps appointing someone within staff to really, you know, hold point on that, because right now, it feels like a number of concerned community residents are really kind of holding that, running with that ball and trying to make those improvements. And I think we could do that in a more collaborative, joint fashion. So thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Thank you, Dimitri. And the last hand up that we have is Ellen Dooley. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, and all the people that have gone into working on this project. It is, I think it's a really phenomenal project for San Carlos to embark on. My hesitation is that not enough planning and work, as much as it's gone into it, it feels almost like the tail is wagging the dog, that we are being driven by the commercial lure of tax revenue and maybe a lack of total vision for the whole project and what it could be. It's innovative in some ways, but we're not really incorporating the housing element. That's the biggest concern that I have about this, is that if you're going to innovate and create basically a whole section of San Carlos that's going to be multi-use, it really should, I know we're addressing the housing element through the general plan, but it's almost like, well, we'll just assume that if we can find enough housing units to satisfy the RENA numbers, that the people who end up working in the east side will just fit themselves into that, rather than let's think that through first, and what's going to work best for those people that are going to be coming into San Carlos and living here, and what's going to make working here more, a higher quality of life for them. So I just think it's a matter of the way we've envisioned this project, and I would ask that we postpone the vote tonight and that we go back and look at this from a bigger perspective. The area could be larger. I mean, there seems like just in this conversation tonight, there's a lot of great ideas about how we should approach this, and I would just hate to see us rush into something and end up with a bigger problem later. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for taking my comment.
Thank you, Ellen.
And we do have one more hand up, Tim Hilborn. Go ahead and unmute.
All right. Thank you to the City Council, and thanks to staff for setting this up. We really appreciate it. I just want to echo many people's comments and think councilperson McDowell's comments about the environmental remediation. I think this is a once-in-a-generational chance for us to really do this right, and being told to stay in Our Lane, I think, is just completely wrong. And as Paul Maginetti said, you know, let some of us, you know, take care of this and try to contact the agencies as well and support you in doing that, but please, please, let's really look at this remediation. I would ask for bio level 1 and 2 only, bio level safety 1 and 2. If we do go to 3, then definitely a conditional use permit. The eastside housing, I think we need to be very careful in balancing the RENA numbers and balancing the amount of jobs that are coming in. I'm hearing some people saying, "We need housing for 10,000 jobs coming in." We're not going to achieve that. Let's be realistic here. Also, let's use the whole city. Let's use all the different places we can. I think there's a lot of places on the east side that have not been looked at, and I think we really need to look at that. So I want to echo the comments that others made about that. There is a lot of potential, and we are very unbalanced as far as the amount of commercial and industrial building as opposed to housing on the east side. I really like the buffer zones that we have. I think we should keep that. And the Green Boulevard, I think it would be great if we could have some anchor restaurants, if we can make that more of a live, vibrant place. I think right now, it's kind of just a place where the people that are working at these companies are going to be able to walk around and have a nice place to walk around, but if we get the chance, let's try to get some anchor places to make it more vibrant and involve the whole community. And the last thing I have, I have a question about the activity hubs. What exactly would they be? So again, thank you, council and staff for doing this, and let's, I don't want to encourage a vote either way. Whatever you decide is fine, but I think, thank you for taking our comments to heart here tonight.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. And there are no further hands from the public.
Okay. Thank you, Crystal. So at this point, we'll move to council comment and discussion. All right, I'll start with Councilmember Rack and then go to Councilmember Dugan.
All right, I was trying to not be first for once, Madam Mayor, but okay. Thank you, and thanks for all the public comment on these issues. I appreciate that. I think a couple of thoughts that I have around this is, I want to first thank, I know that Councilmember Dugan has brought up a lot about housing and Vice Mayor McDowell around the environmental issue, and so for me, I am struggling a lot with the environmental issue here right now. I do not think we're being stringent enough. I do not think we're doing enough around that. So I would love to understand, you know, we're doing lots of different studies as part of this plan, so I would love to be able to incorporate a study of what legally we can do from a local jurisdiction to understand what our rights are and what opportunities we may have to do more around environmental protection for our community. And I think as part of that, I would love to change the language to say that we will, you know, in the vision statement, that we will hold those looking to develop those properties in the eastside vision district to the highest environmental standards and a highest level of remediation possible. I think that since it's a vision statement, I don't see why we couldn't try to aspire to that, but I would love to do a study on that as well. I'd be, I would like to see us to do something around the bio levels, whether it is to just limit to 1 and 2, and 3 with a conditional permit. I think what Dimitri suggested seemed fairly reasonable. And then on the housing side, I appreciate all the comments around the housing, and, you know, I did think, I think, John, I think you asked one question about the east side. I think there is one area in the east side that we are looking at, some changes to housing, if I can recall from the housing element, and that is for East San Carlos Avenue to change that from mixed use to housing only. So as those properties turn over, they would be housing only, which I think is something, which is a great, great step on that. But I would be open to expanding the area that we look at and study at with regards to housing on the east side and sort of, and I think just whether it's part of the housing element or how we do it, I do think there are other areas to look at to identify for potential, you know, down the road and to look and maybe incorporate in this element, but to do sort of as part of that bigger vision process. And then I think if we could, I would, I've heard a lot of different numbers about the jobs housing imbalance in San Carlos. Getting that number would be really useful and helpful to understand sort of either, you know, where our deficit is, so we understand kind of, I've heard a lot of numbers about how many housing units we need to build, but really having a better sense of what that number really is would be helpful. So those are kind of my thoughts at this point. Appreciate all the public comment and all the, and look forward to some discussion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, this was a heck of an effort by staff and by our community and by our commissions. There's an awful lot to liken this plan, and I'm really pleased with a lot of the aspects. Really like the thoughtfulness on activity hubs and trying to activate these neighborhoods. I saw several callouts for perhaps a performing arts venue. That would be an interesting component of one of those for sure. The activity hub loop, I thought that was very interesting and very pedestrian-focused, which is what we need in a major development like this. The Discovery Path Network, linking that old railroad spur into a whole network of paths which would lead over to our reclaimed and newly celebrated Pogus Creek, which would now become a linear public park perhaps. These are all really good, strong ideas. I really like the Green Boulevard along industrial. Um I really like the Green Boulevard along industrial. What a great welcoming way uh for everyone uh to come into a new district like this. Um and uh and then all the good work on uh marrying this to our uh bike and circulation plans. Lots of uh wide throughways. And uh so a lot of, a lot of good thoughts, a lot of good uh have, has gone into this plan uh that I am quite supportive of. Um I do just want to share a couple of quick facts. I know we've been talking about housing and, and what, what the potential is here. Uh so briefly, um uh it was recently reported since uh 2010 in Sammetale County there, this is our whole region, the whole county. There have been 11 times more jobs uh produced in our county uh than units of housing, 11 times. Um over the past 10 years as a community, our normal planning review process has produced on average 68 units of housing, new housing uh per year in San Carlos. So that, that's kind of our, our average, you know, doing things the way we've been doing it, 68 units a year. Um the housing crisis has, has real impacts. Uh one, one um uh particularly disturbing uh uh recent development is uh our schools are losing enrollment. I, I believe we're down nearly 150 students in our uh elementary grades this year. Uh you know, why is that? It's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Young families aren't making it around here. They can't afford it. We don't have enough housing and, and the housing prices are not controlled in any reasonable way. So what's going on on our east side right now? Um this vision plan is covering uh roughly 150 acres. Uh 30 to 40 of those acres are currently in active development uh phases right now. Um the actively proposed projects add up to some 1.7 million square feet. And all in, the development on the east side is clearly going to be well over 2 million square feet by the time uh this plan, it would be fully realized. Um and you can see what, what is being proposed. We've got two fine examples of it, uh beautiful buildings. Uh everyone should go take a look at them. Uh at 888 uh 887 industrial, uh 530,000 square feet, over 200 foot towers and a very large parking garage. And you know, that's under this vision plan, we're going to probably see about 12 more of those is, is the best uh approximation um um I can see. So we lo- we had concerns as a community. We launched this vision plan study to get our, get our arms around it. Our initial guidance going into this exercise was to establish a holistic urban design framework for the district and provide guidance on community benefits. Um and then our uh number one project goal going in was uh to develop a, a vibrant neighborhood with a mix of uses. And uh you know, I, that, that seemed like a great starting point, uh because you know, my understanding of uh mixed use uh always involves residential. So um you know, I, I have been a bit disappointed to see um housing not fully addressed or fully considered in this plan. Especially as this process is unfolded with uh uh so much strong public input outreach, uh housing consistently mentioned. Uh we heard from the Chair of our Transportation uh and Circulation Commission this evening. Uh the joint meeting they had with our Planning Commission, housing was, was a top concern. And uh and this council has shared plenty of concern about how housing will be addressed on the east side. Um so I, I, I do think housing remains the elephant in the room uh as we're considering this plan. Um I've heard uh the position that, boy, we have a housing element underway. Uh why don't, you know, we let that process uh uh take care of it? We don't have to think about it here. Or that housing over there in industrial zones would require a general plan update. All that is valid. Uh but this is our vision plan. This was our attempt to organize our thinking as a community on what our long-term vision is over there. And I think clearly housing has to be part of that long-term vision. And, and we don't know what that means because this plan didn't really address that. Um so uh um I am disappointed in that. Uh good, healthy, you know, and when confronted with kind of complex, boy, what do I do about this issues? I just think we have to consult our, our goals as a city. And I've stated it several times, I won't reiterate it, but good, solid, balanced, mixed use development. In my view, services uh three of our six city goals. Um we have seven goals. Our seventh goal is figure out what we're going to do on the east side. So we're meeting that uh in this process. Uh our other six goals, three of them, number one, encourage housing. That's been a top goal of our city for a long time. So I just don't see how we can develop a vision for such a big uh uh open-ended development section of our city and, and not dress what's been, I believe, our number one goal as a community for, for a number of years now. Um uh improve, a, a second goal, improve mobility, traffic and parking within the city. Well, good, healthy, mixed use development helps with that. Because i- if you have uh housing in proximity with the uh all the new jobs coming in, which by the way are estimated eight to 10,000 new jobs. And with no balance of housing, those would be very car-dependent developments. And so uh all those trips on and off of 101, through Holly, through industrial, to, you know, head over to downtown, try to park at lunch. Uh we're talking eight to 10,000 new jobs with no proximity of housing. Those are all very uh uh car-dependent developments. So uh uh doing that in a more thoughtful mixed use way would service our goal to improve mobility, traffic and parking. And then finally, a major goal of ours is addressing climate change. And, and, and we did a lot of good work on that this year with our new climate action mitigation plan. Um and obviously minimizing all these daily tra- you know, if we had 10,000 jobs without a good balance of housing and our historic rate of 68 units a year does not keep up with eight to 10,000 new jobs. Um so what happens? Well, that means someone new is now living in Fremont, Tracy, wherever, driving in every day. Um driving through our city because, you know, and these are car-dependent developments, if not done in a mixed use fashion. So anyway, uh i- i- in my view, when you're considering a big, complex subject, you know, what do we do here? You got to consult our city goals. And adding a good balance of housing into this uh into our vision uh services three of our six uh city goals, in my opinion. Um whereas uh uh fa- ushering in um up to 2 million square feet of 100% commercial-only development, I'm not aware of a single city goal that that satisfies. Um I'm not. Uh so for those reasons, um I do think uh we need a big move on housing here. We have to think differently as a community. What we've been doing has not uh met the need. Um and I uh think we do need, you know, all the good stuff that is in this plan. I think we need to complement it on our shared vision for housing um as well. And, and that will be useful because we're actively considering our housing element. I don't know how we consider our housing element if we haven't really formulated what, what we want to do um in this end of town. And then, then finally, we've, we've all touched on the uh, the bio safety levels. Um I'm a little distressed that, you know, I remain pretty ignorant. I don't really know what that means. Uh we're setting a vision to usher in 2 million square feet of life science and, and we haven't developed that vision. Um so I do think uh we shouldn't approve the plan tonight and we should spend time to formally uh consider that. Then I also do agree with uh Adam and Sarah that a, a more formal dealing of uh uh the environmental hazards that do exist currently uh should be formulated as part of this vision as well. Uh thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Appreciate that. Vice Mayor McDowell and then Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I'd like to start by really thanking our team. I want to thank Perkins and Will for doing a great job distilling a lot of community feedback into an easy-to-read and understand vision plan. And I really want to thank our staff. This was such a heavy lift. And you know, we can't forget that we launched this vision plan um during the height of budget cutbacks and um the pandemic. And so this was really um just an amazing uh plan to put together over the last nine months. Um I also want to thank the community. I think it's really meaningful that over 250 combined attendees attended our community workshops, all of the stakeholder um sessions. Uh having that community process has just been really critical to moving this vision plan along. Um I, taking a holistic approach to development enabled us to bring forward a lot of innovative ideas. John mentions some um that'll will apply district-wide, like shared parking and planning for recycled water. It has brought out our bike and pedestrian master plan to life, to really see how people can travel through the Innovation District without a car. This plan is an example of how individual developments can be taken together into a plan that becomes greater than the sum of its parts. And so I'm really happy that we move forward with doing this plan. And that was what was so important to the council when we kicked off this process is that we take this holistic view to all of these development projects. And to make sure especially that the community had a seat at the table to plan for this transformational change that's coming to our east side. But as staff noted tonight, the vision plan is not a land use document for housing. Our housing element update is taking the deep dive into housing that this plan cannot. Housing continues to be a top strategic priority for our council and it is not leaving our radar. I think we are all aligned in our desire to make sure San Carlos is a place where people of all income levels can live, work and play. Um I want to again reiterate and I appreciate um the public comment and my colleagues' um agreement to make sure that environmental cleanup stays at the top of our radar. I would like for environmental cleanup records to be posted on the city's website under project, under each project um as a document section in order to be fully transparent with the community. Um I would welcome talking about um a staff member who can be a point person on these environmental cleanup works, um just to make sure that we're keeping track of it and that we're informed and that um our community is informed. And um I, I appreciated Adam's suggestion of looking into um legal options where we could potentially push things along a little bit further. I think this is our community. This is our city. Um I appreciate the EPA and their, their efforts to, you know, manage cleanup projects, but um really at the end of the day, this is about our kids growing up in this town and, and using this once-in-a-generation opportunity of um these properties turning over and actually do the remediation efforts that are needed. Um I also wanted to note that um with regard to jobs, our general plan was adopted in 2009 and it envisioned 9,000 jobs being created by 2030. Um and I, I'm, I'm wondering if at some point maybe Jeff would like to hop on and kind of discuss the general plan process and how this was envisioned so long ago. This isn't something that council has all of a sudden, you know, turned towards um promoting commercial development and forgetting about housing. This is all part of something that was envisioned in 2009 in our general plan. Um so perhaps after Councilmember Collins, I would appreciate the city manager maybe talking about that process. And then I also wanted to just circle back um and uh add my agreement to make bio safety level three a conditional use permit. Um and maybe just not, not even touch level four. Um I think that I appreciated the community's um input on that. I appreciated staff's willingness to update the routing information on the shuttle, um including the kiss and ride pickup and drop-off area in the Caltrain parking lot. I support that language being added to the plan. Um I also um uh support um the housing language with looking at um old county and industrial. I, I, I appreciated that. Um so that's, that's it for my comments right now, Madam, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Collins.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh thanks for uh the opportunity to make some comments. First of all, I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. Uh we heard a lot of different viewpoints. Uh as Sarah said, I wanted to thank Perkins and Will. I just think that they did an outstanding job and, and all the work that, that staff put into it. I will confess that I was really not in favor of even doing this. Uh uh I didn't think it was really necessary. Uh but nevertheless, uh we did it. And I have been pleasantly surprised. I'm uh surprised and amazed at the level of detail, uh the thoughtfulness, um the, the ideas that have come out of it. Uh that is, I, it's just truly an impressive uh uh document. And uh I think everybody that worked on it is to be commended. Um but having said that, you know, when it comes to this plan and the housing element, um I don't think that they're mutually exclusive. One doesn't hamper the other. To me, it really, I don't see really how approving this uh somehow torpedoes or undermines our work on the housing element. I think we can do both. As a matter of fact, I would argue that knowing that um how the commercial development in the future is going to impact that portion of the east side is actually going to help us with our planning for housing. So, and I'm also glad that there were some people who uh agreed that, you know, spreading houses on, out all over the east side really isn't a, a very good idea. You have to, you have to think about it carefully. There are places where housing just should not go. I think it's also important to remember that we've been planning for more housing for years. And part of the problem that we haven't built more housing is us. We, we, we've prevented that. We've had very high inclusionary laws um and ordinances that have um communicated to developers that it's just not economically feasible for them to build the housing. So we are working on that. And, and the Housing Subcommittee, we are working on changing just that so that we will become more attractive to builders that, that want to come here. Um just a couple of other comments. Um as far as the uh, the bio safety levels, uh I'm not ready to make any kind of a decision to that, on that until I know exactly what they are. I know next to nothing. So I don't, I don't, I know that based on what's been said tonight, that biosafety's one and two are good and three and four are bad. Uh to me, that's not enough to make a decision. I really want to know what are those levels? What do they mean? I- is there a three that maybe we would accept? Is there a two that maybe we wouldn't? So I think that's an area that we really ought to study more um before we uh, before we move on. And then the last thing is, is that with some of the comments made tonight and, and some of the asks from, from the public, I, I understand and appreciate those, but it, it makes me feel like that this east side vision plan has be- sort of become a moving target. Um w- we set out to really do a focused study. That's why we picked this area. This was supposed to be a focused study on this portion of the, of the east side. And that's what we've done. And yes, we have a lot of other areas in the east side that we need to address. Uh housing is a huge thing. But I think we need to keep our focus and make sure that we don't lose sight of what, what it is that we're trying to, uh trying to accomplish. So uh I think that's pretty much what, everything I'd written down uh uh to say. But again, I want to thank uh everybody for all the input that they've had. And it's, I'm not quite sure where we go from this. I've heard a lot of uh um conflicting uh feedback from my fellow council members. I hope we get some clarity in the next few minutes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Collins. And I, I've been taking notes and I have a grid, so we'll go over it in just a few minutes um of uh people's comments and requests. Uh I, I also want to echo my council uh colleagues' gratitude with respect to um staff and our consulting team and also more importantly, the members of the community who joined us um in providing input into the east side um Innovation District Plan. Uh when we embarked on this journey, um at the time, there was effectively, you know, lots of projects in the pipeline um with, you know, the idea that it would be um, you know, the regular process and, you know, the potential for each one to be taken on its own as an individual uh project. Um then there was an option presented as was discussed before that we invested 1.5 million dollars in two years in a developing a, a site-specific plan um that may or may not get us exactly where we needed to go. And uh this solution was devised as a way to try to see if we can't understand the impacts of the, of the development that was coming into our community and ensuring that the impacts of them were minimized and then, and um more importantly, they enhanced our community. Um the east side innovation uh serves as a guidepost uh to ensure uh superior design, environmental preservation enhancement, public benefits and to enhance the character. So again, these are policy statements and they're not necessarily designed to be um, you know, uh specific agreements, but they're, they're, this is intended to help us as a community prioritize what's important to us. And I would say the benefit of the housing discussion and, and the feedback that's been given tonight is that the community has spoken. And uh in the beginning, when this council was seated in 2018, um housing became a priority and it became a number one goal. And it has remained um in that place since then. And over time, housing became a priority and it became a number one goal and it has remained in that place since then. And over time, the community has been more outspoken about the need for housing. And so I think in contrast to other conversations that we've had earlier on in my tenure, the fact that there are so many people that are interested in wanting to see more housing projects in our community is a good sign. I agree with Councilmember Collins that it's not mutually exclusive. The housing element is an opportunity for us to really take a look at what we want to create in our community with respect to housing. And we have charged staff with taking a hard look at understanding the impact of the incoming jobs to ensure that, you know, is that goal of thirty four hundred homes, is that enough? Or do we need to do more? And I heard Lisa Porras say to us this evening that that is part of the work with respect to the housing element. So I'm very pleased that staff will continue to honor that as we move forward. I share the concerns about the impacts of lack of housing on our community. I know that we lose a number of teachers every year out of districts, a full third, I think in this past year. We have very few firefighters and police personnel who actually live in our community, who, who actually serve our community. The San Carlos twenty forty dot org housing element update is a tremendous website. It provides a lot of information about that housing element. Everyone is encouraged to participate in that as well. I hope the same voices that came out tonight to talk about east side innovation district planning also participate as passionately in the housing element update as they did so this, this particular evening. So, you know, the one thing that, that, you know, that I keep coming back to in our conversation that we've had is this idea of environmental remediation and I'm hearing strong, a strong interest in wanting, San Carlos wants to be a bit more aggressive with respect to our environmental protections and remediation. At the same time, we're also talking about wanting to put people right in the, in the middle of that. And I don't fully appreciate all that I need to appreciate by expanding our, our housing zone into an area where we have deep reservations about the health of the soil. So in that particular case, I would again defer to the housing element update to address our housing concerns and make sure that we're very aggressive when it comes to making sure that we can accommodate all of these new workers that come to our community. When it comes to the environmental radiation, remediation that was proposed earlier this evening, I, I am aligned with this idea that we try to push the envelope and see where we do have an opportunity to influence and be more aggressive in our requirements there to ensure the safety of our community, especially in light of the flood, the flood levels as well as the bay level rise. When it comes to bio level one and two, again, I, I don't have a full appreciation for the impacts on that. I think, you know, initially I would agree with some of the proposals made tonight that we just focus on one and two, but I think more study is warranted to, you know, if, to, you know, I think directionally being more conservative makes sense, but I think having a more focused discussion on that would be helpful. And with respect to transportation, I would like to see some language written in there about making sure that we take a look at the kiss and ride feature, if you will, on the shuttle drop off on the western side of the train station on the El Camino Real. And I think that's where we, so I think those were the different columns that I had listed. So I'm, I'm in supportive moving forward with the east side innovation district plan. I think that there's some, some finer points. If the council is so moved to move forward with this tonight that we may want to revise and make sure we have clarity on. So at this point, Jeff, I'll turn it to you to find out from your perspective, you know, what you're hearing and what your recommendations are for next steps in this discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A really great discussion by the council and the community, a lot of really good feedback and input. I think, you know, I'll start with the vice mayor's request. And then if, if anybody else wants me to speak on other topics, I'm happy to try to do that or ask Al to jump in to give me a hand. But I think it was just the, the comment about the general plan. We talked a lot about the general plan tonight. We talked a lot about, you heard, we heard a lot about nine thousand jobs and, you know, the need to react to that. And that's actually all, the nine thousand jobs was planned for by, by the San Carlos community in two thousand nine and two thousand ten, when the, the city's general plan was redone for the first time in, in about twenty plus years. That's about the lifespan of a general plan. And the council commissioned a large community committee. I think it had approximately thirty members from all over the community to help create policies for a new general plan and that, those proposed recommendations went to all our subcommittees and there were many community meetings held on it and ultimately was adopted by the city council in two thousand ten. And it envisioned and planned for additional development occurring on the east side. And a lot of that had to do with just the age of the buildings that were over there, though many of them were sort of post-World War II era. And you could see them starting to reach the end of their economic lifespan and beginning to turn over and, and develop and change. And the community created a plan where they envisioned approximately three million square feet of additional commercial industrial space over there that would result in approximately nine thousand new jobs. And at the same time, the, the housing element of that era was expanded by the community to create more opportunities for housing. Some of those opportunities you can drive around the city and see today, they've been built and realized. Other opportunities still exist within the existing zoning. So it's not, it's not so much about, you know, just allowing housing to be built. Housing is allowed to be built today, just like commercial buildings are allowed to be built today. But to the extent we're going to talk about changing housing, you know, this plan neither allows for or restricts housing, but it also doesn't allow for restrict commercial development. You know, this plan isn't what's approving any commercial development. The, the commercial development that, that has been proposed has already been foreseen and planned for in the city's general plan. So your housing element that you're working on now, and in fact, I'll say because the council was so focused on this issue and so concerned about it, you're actually further along than just about any city in the county in terms of doing your housing element. You started early to do your housing element, which is a requirement to redo about every five years. So you're out in front of most of, of our neighboring jurisdictions and doing that. Not only is it, is it really the right tool, it's the legally required tool. It's the only tool that will allow you to look at new height density and housing location opportunities in the city. So we're really excited about that process and really excited about what we heard tonight. And, you know, those folks hopefully will, you know, very much get involved in that process and share with their elected leaders, their thoughts on the issue. So does that cover sort of the general plan thoughts you wanted me to tackle?
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. So, so Jeff, in terms of kind of the finer points with respect to the plan changes that were proposed this evening, how do we, how do we want to capture that and ensure that we have alignment with what to move forward with, assuming the plan moves forward by way of, and I see Al brought his camera on too, so.
Yeah, I think, I think to the extent I heard you say that, that you were tracking those, and I'm sure Steph was helping track those as well. So we could kind of, you know, as you, if you're approaching a motion, you know, we could work through what those elements are that you might want to change. I heard a lot of, you know, really good suggestions and some other things that I think you're probably just wanting to identify and call out in the plan for that additional study. It's gonna, gonna need to take place. So we're, we're happy to stand by and help you work through that list to make sure you cover everything that you intended to cover.
Right, thank you. Okay, so, all right, so, so how does, what's the council's favor with respect to how we move forward? So I can review what I, what I heard in terms of some of these finer points or we can ask staff to do it. We can take a motion and.
So I'd love, Madam Mayor, if you could review the couple of things I know that were suggested and there was some, I think it was the bio levels, it was the environmental, were kind of the two main things that I heard. I don't know what else, just so we're clear.
Yes. So, so the, the only thing I heard specific with respect to the environmental in terms of the suggestion there was to include a study for us to determine, you know, what options we had as a city to push it further. And that was the only specific thing that I heard and I had, I heard general agreement across four of us on that. So unless there's any objections, okay. When it came to bio level one and two, I heard two people suggest we do conditional use permit and two people suggest a study on levels three and four. So I think we need to clarify what we want to do there.
Okay. And could I, that, I think that captures it accurately. Can I just add maybe on the study? I, I think one thing that came up was the consideration of hiring sort of in-house expertise. If perhaps that could be included in the study.
Okay. So having, identifying a point of contact within.
Whether it's an environmental attorney or somebody with that expertise.
Okay, so that was, so that was back on the environmental thing, not the bio level one.
Oh, sorry. Yes, as, as part of the study, if we can incorporate looking into that as well.
Okay. Great. Okay. All right. And then bio level, there was two, two people who called for conditional making use level three conditional and no comment on four. And then two of us proposed that we study level three and four implications and had to proceed with that.
Madam Mayor, I just struggle, you know, in such an important topic. I, I just, I'm not sure how we can kind of, you know, legislate that on the fly. I think myself and at least Ron were concerned. We don't really understand it, you know.
So, so, right. So I didn't have you down for, I wasn't quite sure where you stood. So you're proposing me do a study, John? Because if you, if you are agreeing to that, then that's three for a study for level three and four.
I guess I'm saying that, I mean, I don't know enough about one and two. And I, I'm not, it doesn't feel right to me to send this plan through at this moment in time if this is an important component of that plan. And, you know, and, and we don't exactly know what we're talking about here.
So Al could. May I just suggest that one option would be, let's say the council didn't feel comfortable talking about regulating these bio levels in this plan. What you could do is direct staff to study the issue, bring it back to the city council and you could take action at a later date. And if necessary, you could amend the plan to add something in after you know more about it. So that's an option for the city council.
I would be comfortable with that approach. How, how did, how did the rest of you?
I'm just a little concerned. Sorry, Ron.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I think I like Al's suggestion because I'm, I'm struggling with whether or not we should throw all these things in and approve this or if we ought to continue the item to get a little bit more clarity. Is there any magic about passing a resolution tonight, Jeff? And we've added, we've made so many suggestions and changes and we have so many questions. What about a continuance? Or can we, can all be handled with all of these amendments?
Well, I, I think you can handle these amendments if we, if we put the right context on, on how you're handling this. I don't actually think there's really all that much that you're changing relative to the scope of a plan. It seems pretty normal to the adoption of a plan like this. But I think like what, what John just said, you know, this isn't the appropriate plan to legislate like the specific change about, you wouldn't put, you wouldn't put the regulations about bio level one or two or three or four into this plan. Right? What you would say was because the plan doesn't approve any biotech development, doesn't approve any development whatsoever. So what you would say is a policy statement in a plan like this is staff, before we're faced with approving anybody's plans that get submitted that, that come through, we want to create a set of, of regulations related to the biohazard levels of these types of facilities. And then that's the policy statement. And then Al and his staff will go out and put together information and, and options for you to be able to adopt those regulations so that they're in place before you're ever faced with actually approving a biotech development project. And that's really the heart of what this plan is trying to do, is trying to identify those issues so that we're, we're ahead of them and it's, and you're not, you're faced with having this great conversation tonight when you're not actually faced with approving a development. This would be very difficult if, if tonight was a vote on a project.
That makes me feel better. Yeah. All right. I, I thank you for the clarity.
Vice Mayor McDowell and then Councilmember Dugan.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll be quick. I, I support that, especially given Jeff's phrasing of saying before we're faced with approving a biotech or life science project that we will have this brought back to us by staff. So I would support that change.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I mean, I, it sounded like Ron was interested in perhaps making sure we get this right and continuing. I'm not sure if he moved past that, but I, I, I would support continuing this item. I, I also, you know, I, it sounds like I don't have the votes to join me with having a more thorough vision set on our housing in this. So I did spend quite a bit of time really absorbing this big move number five, support this distinct district subareas. I think because the planning commission was kind of stuck in the same spot we find ourselves right now where, you know, the plan didn't quite meet what they were trying to do and, and they were, you know, I guess legislating on the fly. Maybe there's a better way to phrase that, but I think the, the additions they made actually just don't make a lot of sense. And if we're, you know, so I would rather continue and work with staff on those specific concerns. If we're not going to do that, then I would like to share my specific thoughts in those areas before we would consider moving forward.
Thank you. What's the council do? Have anything else to say? Councilmember Dugan or Councilmember Rack has his hand up. So before I move on, I want to.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, I, you know, my, my thoughts are pretty specific here. So why don't we stay on the kind of higher level general, but when it's an appropriate time, I'd like to just share some specific edits in big move number five that I, I, I think everyone would agree with, because, you know, in my view, they just make sense.
Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to express my support for what Jeff suggested. I think that Ron and the vice mayor suggested around the bio levels. I think that's an appropriate way for us to, to go.
Okay, thank you. I'm in alignment with that as well. Okay. And then I also had the, wanted to accept Al's suggested additional language with respect to the transportation. Is there be, I see some head nodding there. Okay, so we can add that in, Al. Okay, all right. So I don't, I don't think that there was any other specific changes or direction that council had. So Councilmember Dugan, if you wanted to provide your specific.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would direct people to page forty-two where, and this is where the, page forty-two of the vision plan, not, not the packet. And this is where our, our planning commission, you know, kind of went into drafted on the fly mode. Specifically, this is, so principle A under big move five. And this is where they wanted to study the potential for mixed-use residential development. But they wanted to limit that to within a half mile from the San Carlos Caltrain station. I know that created some confusion with folks who live on the east side. who live on the east side. Um, and, and, and if you just look at the radius as drawn, I, I think that kind of just in general misses the mark, having that half mile radius involved. Um, I understand we've clarified, we're going to exclude the areas not in this district. Uh, but I just think we should eliminate the half mile concept. Um, and that we should study the housing throughout specifically because the industrial core subarea, I agree. I, I don't actually think housing is particularly appropriate in the industrial core subarea. And I do agree that we should protect our family-owned uh, uh, industrial uh, smaller businesses that exist there today. Um, the, in my view, housing is more appropriate uh, elsewhere in the district outside of that half mile radius specifically in the uh, catalyst subarea. Um, so my specific amendment would be to remove the in areas within a half mile from the San Carlos Caltrain station. Um, that's, that's one. The second one is the new sub four under B is where they want to um, uh, uh, provide that buffer of mixed use residential development along Terminal Way and Old County Road. And I, I just, I don't really understand how that is under our industrial core subarea. Because that is where we're focused on retaining existing fine grain development character and small business. So I'm glad we're doing this. Um, I actually think that should just be a new principle. Uh, studying that should be a principle because we're in fact, I think with that, with that mixed use, the green you see there is, you know, that's, that I don't believe that is an industrial course subarea. So it, it, you know, just being practical, that seems like a third subarea of mixed use along Terminal Way and Old County Road. Um, I, you know, I, I would be interested if my colleagues uh, agree with any of that or not.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, John, I, I, sorry, I, I can't support your first uh, suggestion about eliminating this half mile radius. But I'm not clear on what your second point was. Can you clarify that?
Sure. I'm proposing that um, the green hashed mixed use area not be a part of our industrial core subarea, but as a new um, is, is just a different subarea. I mean, I don't know how the, the, the housing foreseen in that uh, mixed use residential buffer area is part of our industrial core subarea. So it, it, it just, I, I, you know, I think that should just be a different principle that we will um, encourage a buffer of mixed use residential development along Terminal Way and Old County Road. Um, that feels like a, a subarea distinct from the industrial core subarea and distinct from the catalyst subarea.
Yeah, I, I'm ambivalent about it. And if I'm ambivalent, I, I just don't see how I, I, if I'm not comfortable with it, I just can't support it. So I don't know how anybody else feels, but everything else I, I, I'm, I'm ready to, to move on.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Collins. I'm with you. I, I think I've spoken consistently about um, focusing on the housing element to make sure that we address our housing needs as a community. And I'm glad that that is being done in parallel to this. Obviously, the timeline for this preceded the completion of that particular project, but in my mind, um, to me, that's where we, where we, the robustness of our housing discussion would, would take place. So all right, um, I don't see any additional hands up. So at this point, I'd be um, willing to entertain a motion.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll venture uh, a motion here. I'm going to need some help with the, with the language. I, I don't think it's just enough to say what's written on the sheet here, but uh, maybe go, um, you, staff can guide me as we go along. Um, I'll move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash.
One oh seven.
All right. Uh, resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos approving east side innovation district plan. And then what follows from that, um, Jeff, Al, Greg? With, with, with directions from council as itemized?
Yeah, and I think um, maybe the mayor can walk us through those itemizations and then we can or you all can jump in too, if you think there's anything that we've missed that the five of you have uh, coaxed on.
Okay, so what I have is um, that uh, we will include a study uh, to determine options for additional environmental protections for our community. And also the potential for identifying a point person on staff to um, be the keeper of those intentions. Uh, to direct staff uh, to evaluate bio level safety uh, one through four and um, bring back a recommendation to staff and update our regulations accordingly. And then revise our language in the transportation, um, discussing what was under uh, point to multi-modal station usage uh, to include routing uh, that would include the kiss and ride pickup and drop off area in the Caltrain parking lot off of El Camarillo. Okay, I see head nods. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I, I'll just say that um, uh, uh, you know, I am gonna not be able to support this this evening. Uh, I, I was hopeful we would show a bit more leadership with our vision on housing and and I will just point out that I, I, I just do think that um, uh, you know, we are gonna have to, I, I, the, it, it will be challenging for us to grapple with as a council. Um, the numerous uh, uh, commercial developments that are coming down the pike that are going to be requesting a hundred foot height limits uh, when it's a hundred percent commercial and jobs. I, I, you know, uh, part of the thought on a bigger vision on housing is to actually be able to explain how those types of developments are going to fit into our community. So I'm just pointing out, we are going to be very challenged, I think, explaining uh, the impacts on our uh, surface streets and parking and and, and general congestion in town, um, ushering in a hundred percent commercial here. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any further hands up. Uh, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
No.
And Mayor Palmer Lohin?
Yes. All right. I propose a ten minute break.
And Madam Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself since it's almost, I'm on the east coast and it's almost one AM and I have to have an early start tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Rock for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So we'll return at, let's just say at ten o'clock. Thank you. Are you back?
I am back and we are ready when you are.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Um, so welcome back, everybody. We'll now move to new business item B. Consideration of adopting a resolution, approving the project specifications and authorizing advertisement and a call for bids for the citywide wayfinding and gateway signage project. C seventeen nineteen and presenting on the item uh, this evening is Christian Padilla, Economic Development Coordinator. Welcome, Christian.
Thank you very much and good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, Chris Padilla, Economic Development Coordinator, and I'm honored to be presenting to you on the San Carlos Wayfinding Project. Uh, I look forward to updating you all on our status of the project and adding some background as to how we got here. Uh, the main purpose of tonight is to show the final designs, a timeline, as well as request approval on the specification documents and bid advertisement for the citywide wayfinding and gateway signage project. Next slide, please. I'd like to start by doing a quick overview of the project goals, which include providing the information people need to comfortably access destinations, attractions, parks and other public venues. Um, provide better and timelier route information to reduce misdirected travel. Help drivers locate and identify in parking convenient to their intended destination. Improve motorists, pedestrian and cycling safety by veteran informing visitors and directing motorists traffic along the appropriate street. And further enhancing San Carlos's public image through cohesive and healthographic. Next slide. The project began a few years ago and has had many stops and starts since then. The most obvious and longest stop um, being the last year and a half of this emergency health crisis. At the very beginning, the city engaged uh, to develop a citywide wayfinding study with the guidance from a working group. This working group consisted of the Transportation and Circulation Commission, the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, as well as members of the public. These groups determine key destinations and primary routes throughout the city and develop a design scheme for directional signage, city gateways, banners and place making elements. From there, a community meeting was held to gather feedback on the wayfinding program. Shortly after, the Economic Development Advisory Commission toured mock-up signage that was installed in downtown. After receiving the feedback from EDAC, Transportation and Circulation Commission, the Steering Committee and the public, the designs were adjusted accordingly and a sign location plan was developed. Next slide. Uh, here we have images from the mock-up signage tour with EDAC that was led by our design consultant, Hunt Design. Next slide. Okay, so now I'll shift over to signage design itself. Uh, design guidelines were developed to create a family of wayfinding signs that can be used to expand scope in future years. The full sign family, which we feel are needed to address all needs of our audience, include vehicle directional signs, parking directional, parking identification, pedestrian directional, bicycle directional, place making and map kiosk for the downtown. As well as larger gateways such as the Ford type shown on the lower half of this slide. In the slides that follow, I will have clearer and closer up illustration on the sign. Next slide. Here we have public parking directional sign to guide our motorists to parking opportunities. This will encourage that walkability that we desire throughout the downtown. And similarly, for a large vehicle directional sign, they will deliver destination messaging to our motorists to help them understand where their, their destination is and get them to that general area. Next slide. Here to the right most um, sign, it is a place making sign that illustrates that sense of identity as well. Uh, you can see here that we're also carrying the city brand throughout this wayfinding project. Next slide. Here we have our pedestrian kiosk. And to the right, we see a mock-up representation of this kiosk in downtown. It will help our visitors orient themselves by providing them with directional information to destinations and by using map graphics to list all the restaurants, businesses and attractions in downtown that are within a five to ten minute walk. This will also provide a more advanced or twenty-first century kiosk by making them electronic. They'll either be able to interact with people's phones or provide just a more different type of experience versus a static wayfinding kiosk. The intention is to regularly update it with new businesses. That, and this will be done by using a platform that will allow us to make those updates remotely via wifi or five G. Next slide. Here we have bicycle directional signs that guides our bicyclists to key destination trails like and key destinations and trails like our downtown and Bay Trail. The image to the right is a representation of bike directional signs in the environment. Uh, what we're looking at here is our existing iconic gateway on San Carlos Avenue. As we all know, gateway signs are key entry points along the city that are intended to capture audiences by informing them that they are entering the city of San Carlos. Next slide. Here is a representative rendering of what this gateway could look like at this particular location with the proposed design. It does a good job of preserving, preserving the iconic elements of the sign and provides a very cohesive look and feel with the family of signs that we just reviewed. Visitors arriving at the train station will encounter this arrival point and, and have the sense and, and feeling that they arrived to the downtown San Carlos. Want to make sure that we not only continue to have this prominent gateway piece, but enhance it with newer elements. And as we said before, creating that sense of excitement. Um, I would also like to point out that this location will incorporate illumination, so it is visible at night. Next slide. Here we have our existing gateway sign at the intersection of Holly and Industrial near the one oh, one oh one ramp. Next slide. And as you can see here, we are enhancing the sign with new lettering, stone veneer, stucco painting, as well as landscaping. Next slide. And here we have the Caltrain overpass um, on Holly Street. Currently, as shown, no gateway piece exists at this location. Next slide. And here is a representation um, rendering of what the gateway could look like on the side of, on the side of the Caltrain overpass. This would require approval from Caltrain. Next slide. In all, this package includes a hundred thirty-six total signs throughout the city of San Carlos. And I would like to emphasize that additional signs and scope can be added to this design package through the approval of change orders. When we come back to council in January twenty twenty-two with a qualified bid, we would also request a percentage for contingency that would, that should be able to cover the addition of a few more signs if needed. Uh, next steps include requesting approval from council on project specifications and authorizing RFP advertisement to start receiving bids. In January, we will return for approval from city council to accept a qualified bidder for fabrication and installation. And procurement of material would begin in early twenty twenty-two. Um, we will have a better idea of an installation schedule once we start receiving bids from the contractors, which we plan to share in upcoming meetings. And with that, I end my presentation and happy to answer any questions on the wayfinding and gateway project.
Thank you, Christian. Um, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Christian, for the great presentation. I'm thrilled that we're getting this um, back off the ground again and that you're taking the lead on this. Um, I have two questions. Number one, I really enjoy hearing about the map kiosk um, idea. I think that's something that has been raised by um, several of our business owners downtown. Um, and it came up in our downtown street closure conversation. I'm wondering how many of those kiosks are envisioned and will those go up and down Laurel and San Carlos Avenue? And I'm also kind of wondering how the map looks, if it will be Laurel plus San Carlos Avenue where all the restaurants are listed. Um, it, I, I, I didn't see, it looks like the, the map in the slide is just kind of a general image. So I'm wondering if you can share a little more about the map kiosks.
Yeah, absolutely. So you're correct. The, the image on the map is just a placeholder currently, but we're envisioning is from San Carlos Avenue all the way to Britton. So capturing every single business between those two areas. Um, and we would do a lot of outreach with businesses to make sure that the, um, their names and their, um, their categorization is correct. And what was the second part of the question? I think I missed that part.
Uh, well, I was, I was thinking of like, uh, if we will get to see at some point a mock-up of how that will look. Um, and then I'm also wondering, why wouldn't we continue going down Laurel Street towards South Laurel? Because there's so many businesses down there too. Will that just not fit on the map? Can, can people swipe through the map and look at various images when they're, if it's electronic?
So it will not be touchscreen. And we've um, worked with our design consultants and gotten their feedback that they experienced a lot of difficulty when they've actually installed touchscreen um, kiosks in other cities and other institutions. So it's not going to be touchscreen. Um, and the reason why it goes from San Carlos to Britain is because if we um, zoom out on the map, it becomes illegible. There would be too many businesses and it wouldn't fit on the display, which I believe is four feet by um, two and a half feet.
Okay. And then my, my other question at the beginning was how many of these kiosks would we be purchasing and their locations? And I guess that leads me to one other question. Um, sorry, Madam Mayor, is if we, if we were to purchase one that went on Britain, could we feature a different map that would, that would go Britain to South Laurel? I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how we be, you know, comprehensive. I'm trying to figure out how we'd be, you know, comprehensive with our downtown. So locations and comprehensiveness.
Yeah, absolutely. So the first kiosk is at the intersection of San Carlos and Laurel, near the Starbucks. That's the first area that's being considered. The second area is by the Wheeler Plaza, right at the area that allows for exits from Wheeler Plaza to our downtown. And the third area is by the park that's right at the center of San Carlos.
Okay, thank you. I'll defer to my colleagues, but I do have a couple other questions, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Collins, and then Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Christian. Some really interesting views and proposals. I'm just curious, on the signs where it said San Carlos and El Camino, that big yellow new sign that we're looking at, and the one over the, at the trains or on the Caltrain side there, are those meant to be illuminated or will they just sort of be like brightly or would they be brightly colored yellow?
So the one on the Caltrain Overpass would not be illuminated. The iconic gateway sign on San Carlos is, as I mentioned, and the other yellow sign that is on Holly and Industrial would also receive illumination. I believe there's current electrical there that could be used for that.
Okay, yeah, I guess I missed it when you said that they would be illuminated. And then, are those, is that real, would those be real vines behind the sign there?
So the landscaping, design, and plans have now been finalized, but that is what we're going to propose, so that'll be the basis of the landscaping plan.
I mean, I think it's very pretty, but my only concern is that, you know, those things tend to grow. They grow over the sign, and now we've got to have people trim it. So that's my only thought. You've got some ideas along those lines.
We'll collaborate with Public Works to make sure that what is installed is something that could be maintained easily.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, those are really my only questions so far. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, I too. I'm super excited about this project, and especially that looks like the installation can start even before next summer. This is just, just great. I'm really excited about it. I share Vice Mayor's concern about, you know, extending this map through South Laurel, and I understand that, you know, we want the appropriate level of detail or zoom, but, you know, if it's extra budget or what have you, I think at least two of these should find their way to South Laurel. We equally support those businesses, and in fact, wayfinding to those businesses is one of the challenges of that end of town. So would really like to see signs down there as well, and I think they could just, you know, show a different part of the city in their Zoom. It's terrific. These will be digital displays, so, you know, it's adjustable, and pretty soon, I think, we'll get it just right to support those businesses down there. So I'd love to see that. And I'm glad to hear the monument signs are mostly lighted, and I'm actually glad to hear those are natural vines. I'm not sure I would support anything but natural vines on there, but yeah, we'll certainly have to stay on top of the landscape and keep those looking good with our name on it. My question is, was there any consideration to any, I saw a couple signs that mentioned downtown. Is there anything that would mention any other neighborhoods in town, like, you know, our industrial arts district occurs to me. We just talked about some new subareas on our east side. You know, would we use this as kind of a branding or naming opportunity elsewhere in town as well?
Yeah, so we can, in regard to the place-making and branding, there is this sign that I showed that had City of Good Living. We could add to either the top of that or to the bottom that has that neighborhood of it. And so say, South Laurel, we could add verbiage to those signs or industrial arts. So that's something that we have considered and we are still thinking about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, Christian, you know, I appreciate how complex this project is. I had the opportunity to see it when I first came on council, and I have been advocating that we bring it back, especially during the pandemic, right, when we've kind of reconfigured our downtown. So I'm really pleased that we're being able to pick this back up again. Well, I'm wondering, have you engaged any of the various business groups in getting their input on this? So for example, we've got the new chamber group, or, you know, our chamber moved into, you know, a slightly different configuration, but the Chamber Business Group for Laurel Street, and then there's the Industrial Arts Business Association, and then now we've got this new development coming in on the east side. So could you share with me what your, you know, what your data gathering has been beyond subcommittee on getting inputs on the layout and design of this? And also, you know, sports teams, for example, because I know some of these signs lead to parks and that type of thing.
Adam, if it's okay, I'll defer to you on the question on the chambers that have been involved, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So we did work with the previous San Carlos chamber, but of course, they then were folded into the San Mateo, the San Mateo City Chamber, and we have not shared it with them yet. We certainly could bring it to them though for their feedback, and we could still do that, and if there's significant comments or concerns, we could work them into the change orders that Christian referenced earlier. I don't believe it was shared with sports teams specifically.
And what about Industrial Arts Business Association? Because obviously, they will want to have, you know, traffic as well directed their way. Is that a possibility?
We could share that with them as well. I think the, what we'd want to know is what exactly we want to be directing people towards, if it's the Industrial Arts District as a whole, or if there's something specific over there. And I think earlier on, that was the struggle, is there wasn't quite sure what the item that would be directed towards there was, since there's not necessarily a parking area or a specific non-private business that we could direct to.
I understand. Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to ask for, we're at 10:20, so we need a...
Motion to extend the meeting to 10:45.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Crystal, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack is absent. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to build upon what you and John both raised. I noticed on packet page 654, which kind of lays out all the different signs in the city, that there's actually four areas, four corners of the Industrial Arts District that are slated for the City of Good Living sign, and it looks like there's four posts that will go in around South Laurel. And so I just wanted to follow up with the idea of potentially adding on to the order some kind of place-making for those two areas. Is that something that comes back to the city council in January where we could potentially add that on, or is that something further down the road?
I can answer that one. So I think we could go back to the design team now and just, because currently those signs say City of Good Living, and I'm curious if the council would be in favor of changing that to say Industrial Arts District or South Laurel, and revising the signs to say that instead of City of Good Living to help demarcate those areas.
I mean, I can, Adam and I, as the Industrial Arts Subcommittee, we have met recently with the Industrial Arts Business Association, and place-making was something that was high on their priority list. And I know that in our economic development plan, we've talked a lot about place-making. So I would be in favor of looking into that, potentially adding it. I don't know if we need to brand it as City of Good Living, plus if it looks better to have a consistent sign throughout the city, plus, you know, a place-making sign for that specific subarea, but I would certainly welcome further discussion on that. And maybe, as Laura said, you know, staff can potentially reach out to the Industrial Arts Business Association and, you know, run it by them as well.
We'll certainly do that.
I don't see any further hands up. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
Yes, it looks like there is one hand at the moment. Patty M. should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. I would like to say this is a great idea, except for illuminating the signs at Holly and Industrial. I think you said that the one on the train overpass is not going to be illuminated. Good idea. Those two intersections have a lot going on, the light, there's homes. They don't need more distraction for the drivers coming off the freeway. And I would say, anybody coming off the freeway, getting to that first intersection, does not need a sign saying, hey, it's San Carlos, Holly Street, you already know. So thank you. But please, don't add any more illumination and distraction where you don't need it, because too many signs makes it more difficult to get around. And I guess I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Crystal, anyone else?
No, there are no further hands.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion from council on this item? Yeah, I would just encourage the outreach to the various community groups, especially the business groups, just to make sure that we have, they have a line of sight into this and can provide some input and get any, you know, requested changes early. And I would say that that would include the folks on the east side as well. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, I think that's a great comment about really doing that outreach to involve our business community. Very important on this. And do we need to do anything specific to add signs to South Laurel, or, you know, do we need to see if we have a consensus on that? Those are electronic. It may involve a slightly higher budget to get those done, if that's something we all want to do.
If there is consensus on the council to do that, we can certainly add it in. It's not something we priced out originally, but it might fit in our current budget, but we'd want to look at it, and if we need more, we can come back to you to request it.
Yeah, I would be in favor of that. I think it's going to come up anyway in part of our downtown plan, so let's just, let's just be holistic.
I agree.
If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-108. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the project specifications and authorizing advertisement in a call for bids for the citywide wayfinding and gateway signage project C1719.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack is absent, and Mayor Parma Lohan.
Yes. Okay. This moves us to item 8C. This is to establish and appoint council members to the Ad Hoc Employee Recruitment and Retention Subcommittee. At our last council meeting, this was something that came up as an urgent item, and Jeff, I understand you're going to be presenting on this. Is that correct?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am. In fact, you actually just gave the vast majority of my presentation. Good evening, council. At your last meeting, you asked us to go ahead and agendize for you the ability to consider creating a ad hoc subcommittee for employee recruitment and retention issues, and agendizing the opportunity to appoint members from the council to this ad hoc subcommittee. We've gone ahead and done that for you this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions and help in any way we can as you consider and take action on this item.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. And I heard you say at the last council meeting too, it's to the mayor to typically appoint people to a subcommittee. So I'd like to go ahead and make a proposal. I recognize that this was something that was brought to the fore by Councilmember Rack, and he's not here this evening. I would suggest, as we move forward, you know, these committees can always change, but for the time being, I recommend a member of the, kind of the executive level, if you will, of council, if you'll bear with me on that, and I would recommend Vice Mayor McDowell serve on the subcommittee along with Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Dugan, with your legal background, I think you bring to the fore a very unique perspective that's not necessarily represented on council, and as we pursue recruitment and retention issues, there is a component that is very legally based, so I think it would be appropriate to have somebody with your skill set. So that would be my recommendation for how to seat this particular subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. I can honestly say I'm not looking for additional gigs at the moment, but I appreciate that, and if that's the will of the council, I'd be happy to help in that capacity.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll chime in and say I appreciate the opportunity. I think this is a really, as you mentioned, urgent and very important topic to start working on, so I would be very pleased to participate, and I appreciate your suggestion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think they'll both do a great job.
Okay. Terrific. All right. Thank you. And again, all things could potentially change up after the first of the year as we reassign committees anyway, but I really appreciate your willingness to step into this very important role, and I know that Jeff already has some ideas working. So with that, I'll entertain, if there's no further comment or discussion, is there any members of the public who wish to make comment?
There are no hands.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll entertain a motion at this point.
Madam Mayor, I will move to establish and appoint council members McDowell and Dugan to the Ad Hoc Employee Recruitment and Retention Subcommittee.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack is absent, and Mayor Parma Lohan.
Yes. All right. Thank you. All right. So that brings us to agenda setting. Items discussed in this agenda setting section will be considered by the council for placing on a future agenda. No action will be taken on these items at this meeting. The item is consideration of agendizing an item to receive a report on fender relief funds. And I think, Councilmember Dugan, you brought this to the fore at our last meeting, so any additional comment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, I, you know, I completely trust that staff was going to bring this to our attention when it made sense. This is really just a request that, you know, we get kind of a check when this is going to happen. I was advised back in June, I think, on an amount that was earmarked for San Carlos, and I know we're spending time to figure out exactly how we can use the funds and try to get full clarity on this, the timing of receipt, et cetera. But it's just, you know, I have been asked about it. I know it'll weigh on how we think of other budgetary items, and so I would, you know, just appreciate an update in the near term on this. So that's why I proposed that it be added to the agenda.
Thank you. All right. Any comments or questions? I can't even remember. Do we take public comment on items like this? Crystal or Greg? I can't recall.
We can.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
No, I do not see any hands.
Okay. And then, so do we take a motion? I'm sorry, it's just late. We had a big agenda item tonight, so...
Yeah, the motion would be to agendize the item for a future meeting.
All right, so is there a motion to agendize the item for a future meeting?
I'll go ahead and move to agendize the item for a future meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all right, I will just comment. I'm in favor of doing so. You know, members of the community are interested to understand how much San Carlos is going to get. And it would be helpful to understand what the criteria is for how we deploy the resources. So I would be in favor of the discussion at a future date. Vice Mayor McDowell?
I agree exactly with what you said, Madam Mayor. So second that.
All right, all right, I think we can take roll on this one.
Okay, Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack is absent. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Parmalohan?
Yes. All right, if there are any additional agenda items proposed, I think we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.